Hello, Administration. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mayor Bernadette Kliman.
Is on.
Councillors Eric Bergeron.
Present.
Sig Gardner.
Present.
Dean Hollingsworth.
Present.
Karine Nebah.
Is out.
Councillors Glenn Grant.
Present.
Todd Bennett.
Present.
Elaine McDonald.
Present.
And we will have the late arrival of Councillors Claude McIntosh, Maudis Dupell, and Justin Towndale.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We acknowledge that we are gathering on the traditional territory of the Mohawk People of Akwasasne. The agenda has been sent out to everyone, and we need a mover and a seconder. Councillor Gardner and Councillor Nebah, any discussion? All in favor? Carried. Any disclosures of interest? Councillor Nebah.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not sure when this will come up, but during the Social and Housing Services presentation, if there is mention of the Interior Works Budget and Operations, I will declare conflict during that conversation, as my place of employment is funded through their budget, so I will roll myself away and turn my camera off.
Thank you, Councillor Nebah. Madam Clerk, you've duly noted that, I'm sure. We need a motion to go into Committee of the Whole? Councillor Grant and Councillor McDonald, all in favor? Carried. So this is the first of two special council meetings, one today, one tomorrow, that has come as a result of our discussions at budget time. And I will say that this presentation and the information is pretty thorough from my reading of it and my understanding of it, and I'm really looking forward to the questions that council will have and the answers from Administration, because they have put a remarkable amount of work into this presentation. And the point is to have these conversations, not necessarily always in the context of the two, three, four, five, whatever day budget process that we are usually undertaking in February, but rather doing it now, ahead of decisions that need to be made or directions that we want to take. But also, this is really an effort to respond to questions from council based on this really great presentation. So, thank you very much. I'm going to turn it over to Madam CAO for introductory comments, and she may also then turn it over to Madam CFO.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, good afternoon, everyone. We have a package in front of you that will go through all of city departments, so what we're hoping to do is really start at the beginning, and we'll just go through one department at a time. A lot of the information is consistent with information that was provided during the budget process, but then we've also added some additional pieces of information. Council will have an OR chart for each department, which I think would be helpful if you understand their business units and their operations. We have also included an overall, I guess, line-by-line general ledger of accounts for the city as a whole. And we have also provided a summary sheet that breaks down everybody's increase over last year, from 2020 to 2021. And what we've done is, I'm going to have Tracy kind of walk through that sheet, but she's got it without debt, and then on the opposite side, it's with debt, so she can talk about those operating budgets, just to give council an idea of where we sit with those year over year. I think that we'll have Tracy kind of do a little bit of an intro into the first part of the information in the book. If council has questions at any time, then that's great. Today, the discussions will have to end, I believe, pretty much at 6:30, because council has a PAC meeting at 7 o'clock. And then tomorrow, perhaps, we're not as restricted with time, we can go a little bit later or earlier into the evening. But with that, I'm going to hand it over to Tracy Bailey.
Madam CAO, I'm going to aim for 6:15, okay?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, through you, Madam Mayor. Before we get started, I thought we would go over a few pages of your document that was provided to council and summarize the financial components of the operating budget. So, in August of every year, staff begin to prepare the annual budget for the upcoming year. Based on the current levels of service, the operating budget includes resources for the day-to-day costs of delivering municipal services to residents, businesses, and visitors to our community. On page 14 of the council agenda is a chart, as Ms. Adams noted, that lists each city department. The chart compares 2020 net budget to the 2021 net budget. Highlighted in blue, the city operating budget submission for 2021 increased by $736,994, or 1.05%, excluding debt. Highlighted in pink, an increase of 1.9 million, or 2.58%, including debt. Page 15 provides the same information, but with debt charges included with each respective department. So if Municipal Works is borrowing for its yard, as an example, that debt is included in the Municipal Works listed on that table. Pages 17 through 25 provides the line-by-line for each revenue and expense account for the city overall. We have broken revenue into main categories. You'll see payments in blue, provincial and federal grants, revenue from other municipalities, fees and services, and then, moving forward on page 19, internal revenue, and then contributions from reserves. On that page 19, the total increase of revenue is just $2.3 million, just under $2.3 million, or 2.26%. Expenditures are presented in categories as well. That's salaries and benefits, purchase of goods, services and rents, financial and long-term debt, insurance, and financial. On page 19, for salaries and benefits, the city had an increase over the 2020 budget of 1.7 million, or 2.17%. On page 21, the total for purchase of goods was an increase of 183,000, or 1.75%. On page 23, we have our services and rents, an increase of 141K, or 0.44%. And the same page, long-term financing of long-term debt, an increase of just over $1 million, or 23.01%. And insurance premiums, an increase of 240,000, or 25.52%. On page 24, we have total financial. Total financial includes the transfers to community agencies, transfers we see in Social and Housing Services, IT, hardware and software, direct costs. We had an increase of just over $849,000, or 1.84%. And on that page 24, you'll see overall total operating expenditures for the city increased by $4.2 million, or 2.39%. Taking revenue into consideration, net departmental operating budgets for the city increased by 1.9 million, or 2.58%. The same thing you would see on the pages we noted before for our total operating costs. The summary page for this detail can be found on page 16. The next section of the document provided to council includes the departmental organizational charts, the 2021 budget commentary, and the financial summaries for each department. And that's what we will be walking through over the next several hours and into the meeting tomorrow. On page 87 through 90, this provides a staffing comparison for the years 2018 through to 2021. And the final section of the document provided to council is a detail of contributions to and from reserves, and an estimate to December 31, 2021. So the purpose of reserves and reserve funds is to address long-term funding strategies and to ensure a good financial and cash management for ongoing financial stability of the corporation. So it does have an impact on our operations, but for most purposes, used for capital planning. So as outlined in the city's reserve and reserve fund policy, the city has numerous reserves and reserve funds, and they're consolidated into the four main characters: our operating reserves, capital reserves, our restricted reserves municipal, and our restricted reserves external. In 2018, the city adopted a long-term financial plan for the city. The long-term financial plan identifies contributions and disbursements for each reserve and reserve fund, and applies strategies to ensure that funding will be sufficient to meet planned future obligations. And so the city continues to make contributions to reserves for this purpose, and this is through its operating budget. Examples of this would include the capital levy and the life cycle levy contribution to reserves to be used to fund projects that are not typically funded through long-term financing. We also make contributions to the vehicle equipment reserve for the replacement of assets, for fire, municipal works, police, and transit services. We make an annual contribution to the land ambulance reserve for amortization for paramedic services capital replacement. And every department excluding Transit and Glenstirlam Lodge, because we haven't put them on this program yet, pay a rent for the space that they use, and that rent is contributed to the reserve and then is taken from the reserve for maintenance or replacement of equipment and machinery at the facilities. And then, just recently, based on a report from DFA Infrastructure International, the city began to contribute to the waste management reserve for capital requirements at the landfill. And also, just recently, we started contributing to the social housing reserve for new builds. So that is a summary of the document before council. And as Ms. Adams noted, what we thought we could do is walk through it, where department managers describe their operations to council, and that we would begin on page 26 and move forward through the report. Unless there are any questions for me.
Sir Hollingsworth?
Thank you, Your Worship. I don't know, Your Worship, whether you want us to wait for departments before we ask questions, but this one doesn't really fall into any one department. It's more of a generic, general one.
Oh, so please ask.
Question. So, on page 12, and there are a few things that I'll wait, and they may answer, but just there was one perplexing one to me. On page 12, under Other Municipalities. You, and this is to Ms. Bailey, of course. I realize, Ms. Bailey, there are some things that we have no control over, like we are contractually obliged, so land ambulance, as an example, we provide a service, we follow a contractual agreement in terms of what we ask other municipalities to pay, and that's it, we're sort of set. But if I look at the budget of $9.5 million from other municipalities, the increase is only $534,000. So here's where I'm kind of going with this. Why would we not recoup the same from other municipalities that we did for our taxpayers to accommodate our budget? Are you following where I'm going with this question? So if the budget is $9.5 million, and the taxpayer is paying 2% because of increases, on the things that we can control, why wouldn't we get, recoup all of that increase?
Madam CFO?
Through you, Madam Mayor. We recoup everything we're able to recoup from other municipalities, so it's not a one-to-one ratio. Of course, you mentioned the agreements that are in place with Social and Housing Services, Glenstirlam Lodge.
The things that come to mind, maybe I can couch it this way, the things that come to mind are landfill, right? We take other municipalities' landfill. Do we not have control over how much we charge?
We do. So there would have been agreements that would have come to council for approval, and I believe they're on a full-cost recovery. And the same with whenever we look at fees for our facilities, et cetera. That's based on what we see in other municipalities, what would be an appropriate fee. So, yes, I believe throughout this budget, there's many areas where we're recovering from SDG for municipal services in different capacities.
Right, with the landfill side, have we factored in the cost of opening and closing it as part of our cost recovery?
You would have to. I would prefer if that...
And I'll wait. Maybe I'll be best if I wait, Your Worship, until we get to respective departments, and if I have a question, then, because I don't want to sidetrack things right out of the chute, so I'll kind of keep my questions, and they may be answered during the course of the presentation, so I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Ms. Bailey.
Councillor Bergeron?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can I just get a summary, maybe from the CAO, on how we define levels of service? I know it's going to be a theme throughout, in terms of how admin decides if it is being maintained.
Madam CAO?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If there is an adjustment to what we would deem a level of service, you should see that in the commentary for the department. For the most part, most of the time, our levels of service are pretty consistent year over year. If we're increasing levels of service, it's usually via an initiative by council or a communication report that's come from council that we then start to plan for moving forward. But some things will be identified, and it could kind of depend on how we define levels of service as well. So if we've improved part of our transit infrastructure, our buses, I don't know that we would deem that as an improvement in the level of service, it probably would be instead a maintaining of our fleet and replacement. But we'll allow departments to speak to that, but for the most part, they will speak to something that we would deem to be a change in level of service.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Madam CFO, back to you to introduce the next speaker.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Maybe we can start on page 26 of the document, and that is council and CAO, so if Ms. Adams can start.
Okay, through you, Madam Mayor. So on page 26, we start off with the section for Cornwall City Council. If we move to page 27, there's some information that's provided here with respect to council, how it's made up, some of the activities of council. It speaks to the organizations and memberships that council participates in, as well as it identifies some of the dollars that we have set aside for conferences and training. If we take a look at council's operating summary on page 28, on the following page, you'll see that salaries and benefits increased by 12.18%, or a little over $47,000. A significant component of that is a full-year costing of the strategic planning coordinator, so that was budgeted for a half-year in 2020, and now it's a full year in 2021. There would have also been increments provided to council based on previous decisions of council for their compensation for the year. And outside of that, any changes in council's budget has really been very, very minor in nature. So with that, Madam Mayor, maybe I'll see if council has any questions.
So, council, please feel free to ask questions as we go along. I will, I'll keep an eye on the screen at all times. Councillor Bergeron?
I think I froze, sorry. This is also kind of a general question, but can you, and I've asked it at budget before, we go budget to budget in our calculations, not actuals to budget. And I realize it's tricky to do actuals, because the year isn't over as we're going through, but can we, can I just get the general philosophy on why the percentage change is budget to budget and not what we actually spend? Because sometimes those are very different calculations.
So I would, through you, Madam Mayor, I would say that budget to budget is important because it reflects the requirement from the tax base, as well as any other funding sources that you have year over year. So budget to budget really dictates what you're going to look for, for funding from, whether it's the tax base, whether it's other municipalities. So budget to budget is a pretty standard comparison. Actual information also is very good, so when we're looking at doing our budgeting in the fall, we will often look at our actuals, we look at our three-year trend, or we might look at our actuals in the past, to make changes to budget based on historical spending patterns or what we've seen for costs. But typically, I'm going to say typically, budgets are done budget year to budget year, and explain the difference.
Thank you. So if there is something where we're spending far less year over year, that amount, it's implied, goes down?
Through you, Madam Mayor. It might. It could be that we've re, it could be that we've reallocated a budget line to another budget line, you will hear that through some conversations. We also have some budgets that could have some extraordinary events, right? So you could have a really, I always use winter control as one of our examples, and grass cutting is another one, right? Depending on those weather patterns, you could spend significantly less or significantly more than what you've budgeted. So what we tend to do is we take our, we have a winter control reserve, we tend to try and budget relatively reasonably, knowing that we can fall back on the reserve if we have an excessive winter, and then in years where we don't have an excessive winter, we make contributions to the reserve to fall back on. Because years and years ago, we would have some very big variances to our budget, just on winter control alone, depending on what occurred.
So, in this specific department, the services and rents, but 2020 actuals are far lower than 2020 budget and 2021, it might be a good example to show what you're referring to here.
You froze there for a bit, Councillor Bergeron. You mean services and rents is what you want Madam CAO to address?
Yes, as an example.
Great. So for council, the big item for services and rent in 2020 was the conferences that didn't occur as a result of COVID. So there were some conferences that council did participate via virtual component, but we didn't have the travel, we didn't have the hotels, we didn't have the other expenses that go along with that. And there were some conferences that may not have occurred in 2020 that we recognized savings on. So now, when we are planning our budgets, we're going to still plan that those conferences, hopefully, were, you know, we planned our budgets back in the fall, we're planning for some of those conferences, hopefully, to take place. So we didn't scale that back.
Okay, so in this case, it's a COVID-related difference in actuals versus spending?
Correct. And perhaps, Madam Mayor, if I could, what we also did with this budget, and I believe that many other municipalities did the same thing, is we didn't make major assumptions based on COVID for our budget. We budgeted like we normally budget, and by do- And by doing so, then depending on what the impacts of our budget are, also allows us to reflect funding opportunities from the province for compensation of some of these things that have resulted as a result of COVID.
All right, thank you. And sticking with council, can we look at board honorariums and how that process is determined and which boards get honorariums and why?
Madam C A O.
Certainly through you, Madam Mayor, there is a board honorarium for the, so it's on council's expense reports that we provide to council every two months. So there's a board honorarium for the mayor, for the police services board. There is also a board honorarium for a councillor if they're the chair of the police services board or a chair of the Glensmore Lodge. And there might be an honorarium for the health unit. I think I would have to, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I will look to, look to Tracy if she has that information handy.
There is an honorarium for the Eastern Ontario Health Unit Board.
Yes, Madam, Madam CFO.
I, I believe if there is one, it's redirected to the city. Not to the councillor that sits on the, on the committee.
Right.
So perhaps, Madam Mayor, if I could, board honorariums are paid by the organization that has representatives that sit on their boards. Our council made a decision for certain boards between the health unit, the conservation authority. Those honorariums are paid to the city, but they're not paid to the councillor. So it's reflected on council that we've received that, but it's not been paid to the councillor.
So, thank you.
Any other questions at this stage? Counsel Hollingsworth?
Just as a follow up on that honorarium, there was a time many years ago when all honorariums were automatically kicked into, I guess, we'll call it the pool of money. And I don't, and that was even as of two thousand and three, so I don't know when it changed. Do we know what the rationale was for getting away from that? So even members on the police board, members on Raisin Region, all of the boards, and the rationale at the time was every committee and every board that every councillor sits on is arguably technically the same. And so why should any one board receive money versus the other? I'm not looking for a debate. It's, that's not where I'm going with this. I'm just wondering, do we know when council got away from that thinking or what the rationale was to go back to the idea that certain boards get paid and some don't? I mean, I realize that the organization pays the honorarium, but there was a time when it just kind of went into the pool and now it seems that some aren't. Do we know why or when that changed? And it might have been before anybody's time.
Through you, Madam Mayor. At the previous term at council, there was a resolution passed by council that if you are the chair of the police services board or the chair of the management committee at the Glensmore Lodge, you got paid an honorarium. And I think that as chair for those two organizations, there would be more work involved. You might have more interaction with staff and the organization planning, planning agendas and preparing. It was a decision.
Right. So it was a it was a previous council decision that ultimately. Fair enough. It's all I wanted to know. Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Madam C A O.
Counsel Gardner and then Counselor Mack.
I just want to know, how do we account for? We have a bunch of vacancies. As I was going through this, there seemed to be a lot of vacancies. For instance, the chief building officer, Benson Center facilities manager, maintenance manager, asset manager. Those vacancies, how do we account for those in, in terms of money? What are they being paid or is money being put aside if we hire somebody? How does that work?
Madam C A O.
Through you, Madam Mayor, that'll get covered off when departments are walking through their budgets.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Mack.
Oh, question, what Dean was talking about, the honorarium for chairs. That came in the last council. Marine mentioned that. In fact, I made the motion that the chairs be paid an honorarium. It was in previous council, but Marine pointed that out.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Uh, thank you, Madam C A O, for the reminder that, you know, during the budget process, we did talk about that this was not a COVID budget. In other words, we continue to budget as we would, especially because we want to make sure that the upper levels of government understand, you know, what the needs really are and where we might require assistance. So thanks for that reminder. We did talk about that extensively at budget, but it merits repeating.
Next item. Madam CFO.
So if we move on to page twenty nine, it's the C A O's office. Not very much of, not very much of a change over twenty twenty. Most of the increase over twenty twenty is attributed to salaries and benefits. So within the C A O's office, there's the C A O salary, half of the admin assistant and the C A O's office, as well as our public information coordinator. The other line item with a little bit of money is under services and rent, eighty seven thousand. A big part of that is attributed to advertising with the media and translation. So a little over seventy thousand dollars of that is attributed to those two items.
Counsel Bergeron.
Thank you. In terms of advertising with local media, how is that distributed? Or how is the, the process of, of where that money is spent or how it's spent? Is there a, a policy or a way that's done?
So through you, Madam Mayor, through our budget, a big part of that is covered off for the City Hall Bulletin that you would see in various media sources every two weeks. There is going to be, there will be some components of advertising that you'll see individually in different budgets. I use the planning department as another example because depending on what's occurring in the planning department, they will have to provide public notice. We also would spend a little bit of money. The public information coordinator would spend a little bit of money when we're trying to promote certain items on social media. Facebook, we will sometimes spend a little bit of money to advertise. And so there's some miscellaneous items there.
Yeah, no, I mean, I didn't know if there was a, a specific set policy for, or who gets what, but it sounds like it's a little more long-term advertising for specific items.
Yeah, so this is not really so much any type of marketing type of information. This is really the advertising we put in our City Hall Bulletin every two weeks about, you know, our programs and services and hours of business and holidays and things that are going on in the city every two weeks. Our advertisements for job postings, it's that big two-page ad that you would see in local media.
And then, I mean, the only other follow-up, the public information coordinator is a relatively new position. Can you speak maybe to the, the impact that's had on, on getting the message out in terms of cost, audience, those types of things?
Through you, Madam Mayor. So we have had a public information coordinator for quite a while. But during the previous term at council, when the position became vacant, the incumbent took a position in another area. So then we went through a process with council to review the position and then subsequently filled it. That position, from my perspective, is instrumental in communicating to the public. The position primarily oversees much of the activity on our website and is a resource person for departments. Also manages a Facebook account, Twitter. We have many videos that we've done for different things that have come up in the city just to get the community engaged and aware. Certainly public notices, the City Hall bulletins that go into media sources every couple of weeks. The individual has also been working diligently on the street level videos that we've been running this year or in the past twelve months that have been extremely successful. So that's, I, I'm not sure how, how much detail you'd like me to go into, but I think the position has been instrumental in making sure that we've provided good information timely to the community. The position also was relied upon greatly during COVID in the first part of COVID. So we would use that role as well to help us push the message out that people had to maintain distancing, wear masks, wash your hands, all of those safe things to try and prevent the spread of COVID nineteen.
So thank you. Yes, that, that's, I would say enough detail. I guess the question, you know, my questions aren't always about cutting from a budget. Is there enough? The public information, you know, there seems to be quite a lot coming out. Is this a role that needs to be expanded? Is there other departments that could use a service like this in-house instead of outsourcing it? Or, or examples of that?
Through you, Madam Mayor, that's a, that's a good question. I know that, I know that she's very busy. She does work very well with all city departments. I don't think that I would say necessarily that we're under-resourced. But if there was something more significant that council would like to do, then, you know, we'd have to look at opportunities internally with respect to how we'd manage that. So, so the street level videos, for example, have been a fairly, a fairly big hit. But departments are also very good at engaging to get the information prepared for those videos. So I think that, I think that the resourcing right now is, is adequate. I'm not aware of anything else that council would like to do. We have also recently engaged in a company to help us with more public engagement. Bang the Table is a very well-known organization out of Kingston that does a lot of work with municipalities. So we've invested a little bit to pilot that this year to have Bang the Table help us with our public engagement. So I'd like to see how that goes because I think public engagement is one area when we're trying to survey and trying to bring people in to engage and provide feedback and participate. That's one area that it's always, I think, difficult, depending on subject matter, to try and engage people and get them in.
Thank you. That's an excellent answer. The Bang the Table, where would that be in our budget? Where would we see that that's a chosen priority?
So for Bang the Table, what we did this year is through, through my budget as C A O, I have a little bit of money that sits in a special projects. I guess a part of our working reserves. And so we're going to utilize some of that money this year for public engagement and pilot it and, and see how it works for all city departments. So the cost that we got into for this year, I believe it was fifteen thousand dollars for the year. We're using it for the city. We're going to use it for the Harbour Development Corporation when we try to get out with community engagement for that. I think we want to measure the success of it. And then if it is good, then we're going to, we'll set up a budget for it in future years.
Thank you.
Counsel Bergeron, that is an excellent question. And I just want to say from my perspective that the public information coordinator is, yes, busy, but there's room there. As we grow as a city, as we become more strategic in our plans around growth, that position is going to become even more important. Certainly to, to echo Madam C A O's comments, during COVID, the public information coordinator was, was instrumental in helping to amplify the messages from the health unit. And so there's also the Francophone component. So you have to also go through that position to coordinate that the messages are bilingual. So it's, um, it's an important position that could take on more space as our city becomes more strategic in, in its plans around growth. So yes, it's a, a good question and it's a good forward-thinking type of, of question. Thank you. Somebody else had raised a hand. Counsel Gardner.
Yeah, I just, the C A O mentioned the word survey. And she does a lot of that work too, our, our
Yes.
relation, breaking not only putting the surveys out publicly, but also breaking down the statistics. And that seems to be quite a, an awesome job to have. And I just don't want to say she does surveys. I want to say that she does a lot of work with that.
Yeah, you're correct.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're correct. And to, to Madam C A O's point, you know, as we go forward, we're also going to be engaging around the portlands. But that means that our council is also going to be doing some training around First Nations indigenous issues. And that too is going to require some support likely from public information coordinator, like potentially from the strategic planning coordinator as well. So again, these are strategic positions. Any other questions? Welcome, Counsel DePell. Good to see you. Madam C A O.
Okay, so then following that, we will flip to page thirty one. And then Mr. Clark will speak to corporate services.
Thank you. Hello, Mr. Clark.
Good afternoon. Hello. So if I'm looking at page, well, if I look at thirty one, you can see the general order structure within, in the group. On page thirty two would be, again, a list of kind of the goals and commentary set out for the clerk services from what we plan on looking at in twenty twenty one and what we're looking to achieve. The digitizing, some microfilms is big. You know, that obviously there's been a lot of exercise and discussions amongst us just at various stages with various projects about how to take those existing documents and move them into more, you know, forward use based on the history or transitioning them to a more electronic format. Policy and procedure is another big one for this year. It's probably been a while since we've really gone through a lot of review of what is we were looking to do from our policies, which ones would need to be updated, which ones are no longer required, which ones should be amalgamated and for a more, you know, consistent approach with them. E-scribe, getting everything back or up on e-scribe would again yet be another item that we'd really want to do. I think we're, we're getting close to having everybody up included in it so that we all have a consistent package and in set of minutes and whatnot as we, as we do meetings. And the last one I, I'd probably focus on is just continually cross-training. How do we make, you, you know, a better customer service experience for everybody that, that might be approaching the counters? How do we make sure that everybody has the right information so that we're not passing off what we, what we're able to answer? And then that, if somebody does come in with a question that we're, we're putting it to where we think it should be done versus repeated handoffs or, oh, not here, call somewhere else. So that, that, that's become a large part of it too. So, and then lastly, I guess, as we prepare for next year's election, a lot of work will begin to be done by Ms. Leveque and Ms. Cascadet and preparing for, for that. And, and having been through it last time for the first time from watching it, there is a lot of work that goes into it. And, you know, I think it's a truly underappreciated level of effort that, that goes into making our elections run as smoothly as, as they do. So I guess with that, I'd happily take any questions. And I'd also, I know both Ms. Leveque and subsequently for human resorts, Spruce Stoning, are both here to, to, to be able to answer any questions as well.
Thank you for alerting us to that, Counsel Bergeron, and then Counsel, Counsel Grant.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Clark, I, I think the question is for you, it might be for the C A O, but your key goals for departments, how do you? Because we, we see the key goals for this year, and it's a question, I suppose, for all departments. How does senior management look at the How does senior management look at these key goals, how do you? Kind of reverse engineer if the budget has helped you get there, if the, I suppose that's what would be. Levels of service, but in terms of tracking the goals, what you've accomplished year over year and and where the. Where the difficulties lie, it it's hard, maybe just for me, it's hard to read this. Document and really know how council can help achieve these goals.
Um, so if it's a more a philosophical approach for the city, I would absolutely say. Probably the C A O versus my little corner of the world, if you're asking me specifically, I I have, you you know, just. Probably the very similar answer to the one that the C A O would provide, so I just, I'm not trying to avoid your question, just want to make sure I'm answering it in the most appropriate way.
Madame Seo. Perhaps, Madam, yeah, perhaps, Madam Mayor, if I could uh step in. So when we're working through this budget process, it starts for us, really conversations start to begin to take place late August, early September. And I will often meet with manager, I meet with managers one-on-one every month to kind of talk about what is going on in their areas. Um, in the fall is typically when we take a look at planning for the upcoming year. But then also too, we also take from it. What has occurred over the past year, two years, what have we heard from council, what has occurred in meetings? So when you look at uh some of the key goals for um uh clerk services, for example. There were some things that we had initiated with respect to eScribe. With respect to taking a look at terms of reference for committees, because some of those had been outdated, our committees had changed quite a bit during this term. And then uh we also get into um. A couple of other items that are, I like the digitization we have talked about for a little while. Um, it was something that um I guess has been raised as something that we could be working towards for the last. Couple of years, um, so through discussions as a team. We also work together to identify priorities as a senior team, so you'll see when we walk through some of these budgets, there might be some items. More so maybe in finance and human resources, because it would affect all departments. But typically, those items are a result of discussions at the senior team level, and if we're looking at uh internal. Processes and policies, then that's where it's discussed.
Thank you, and Mr. Clark, that answers the question, don't worry about it. Uh, you've always been very uh direct with your answers, so. The only other thing, I know uh in a previous budget, there was, there was a goal of uh lean management principles that I think. Was attributed to your department, can you speak maybe to what that means for the the whole, the city as a whole? How those types of practices keep us efficient and and operating that way?
A- absolutely, uh, thank you, so we we did run um. A number of people, I can't remember the exact number, but we had a number of people go through uh what we call the Green Belt Program. Which was essentially the introduction to the lean principles and and how it might apply to their various areas, so. We tried to use people from each department um that was nominated by the the manager. Um, we saw varying levels of success with all of this, but we ran a number of them, I think. Um, Ms. Morgan um ran an excellent lean project that ended up, you know, streamlining a lot of the intake process. Um, you know, really helped, I think, solidify or document what processes they did need versus processes that they that they could have done without. I I am dramatically oversimplifying something that took Ms. Morgan a very long period of time to do, however, I think it was. A stellar success when it came to walking through it, you know, including um. People that worked with the process and asking them what other ideas they could have, and then it began to kind of run on to, you you know, a a very large project. Achieved substantive results, so last year we were looking at. Um, refining it a bit, maybe looking at training somebody internally with uh with the eye of having a black belt. Uh, in in the in the lean and Six Sigma the training. Having an in-house resource that would be able to cascade those principles throughout the organization. Um, and we we're still looking at that, COVID has thrown a a great big monkey wrench into us. Continuing to look after and and kind of chase down that platform, um, we. Uh, it's not as an excuse, it's just the focus is making sure that we've done other things, but you know, with the light at the end of the tunnel now. Uh, I, we'd really like to see it maybe start to kick up again, um, when when things open up, I don't, I don't even want to say next year, if if we could. If we could find something again, I know we have a couple of people within uh the group right now looking at a course too, so we. The the intent is there, we just, we just need the world to kind of open back up.
Thank you, so safe to say, it's not lean principles just for your department, it it's meant to be. Uh, training for for the entirety of the city department.
Precisely that, a lot of it was process documentation of, you you know, like. Who, how many people do we have touching a process, how many people need to be touching a process? Like how many loops are are continuous throughout a process, like that was a lot of what we were looking at, so we we, I know. Uh, Chief Lister ran a fairly significant process about how do we maybe work with um reporting and whatnot. Um, so there there, it was corporate-wide, um, and and some were farther along than than others by the time we ended up having. Kind of this coming into effect.
Thank you, so I I don't see it as key goal, but I think it's an example of something that you're just always working on, is that it?
Pretty much, it's continuous improvement, right, how do you?
Thank you.
Counselor Grant and then Counselor Gardner.
Hmm, thank you, uh, Madame Mayor, uh, hi Jeff. Just looking at the uh terms of reference review for coronal committees, are you going to include the committees? Get their input on their terms of reference and how they can improve them or change them, modify them, et cetera?
If if it's okay, if I'd like to ask Ms. Leveque if she to provide the answer for that, if she's more directly working with those groups than I am.
Madam Clerk?
Uh, through you, Madam Mayor, I think what we would do, same thing as we've done in the past, is work on the document, uh, make the changes. Um, for the committee and then present it to the committee for their input. Um, so they uh would not sit with us and go line per line uh and mending the document, we would do that work first. And then uh that draft copy would go to the committee for their input.
Um, I guess I, I think being on the committees online, if you reached out and said, how can you improve this document? I think it would be a more efficient way of doing it, that's just my thoughts.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for that, Counselor Grant, Counselor Gardner.
Uh, Jeff, through you, uh, when I was first elected and a few times after, you and I discussed reorganization. Uh, to achieve uh efficiencies, and that's pretty well what uh Counselor Bergerol alluded to. A- and it's to lower costs, and if uh we don't have to hire people to fill jobs. Uh, and without overburdening our employees, can you speak to that, or you pretty well. Cleared it up with uh Eric Bergeron, but I'd just like to know. What you're doing about reorganization and effi- to achieve efficiencies, that's basically where I'm going with that. And you know, right from the start when I was elected, uh, I went into your office and we discussed this, so. If you may, go ahead, Jeff.
I I remember the conversation, absolutely, and and I I remember also saying that we we look at every time that we have a vacancy, for the most part, we we review it, y- you know, if we have. Yeah, if, you know, a paramedic resign and we we, that isn't one we review, we we hire those, but from the standpoint of. Uh, a lot of the other positions, we are constantly looking at. If we had, if we were starting out, would we have designed it or structured it that way? And when the answer through that conversation is no, we'd maybe adjust it. Then we would look for the least intrusive way of making that adjustment. And the least intrusive way of often making that adjustment is making sure that we we manage those things through attrition, so if a job does come open. You you know, it is often looked at amongst ourselves, if it's not just myself and the and the department head doing it, it would be myself, department head. You know, and and any number of others with the C A O and CFO about what what it might look like and how we might approach it moving forward. Um, a- and that we look at those things, y- you know, from a clear sense of setting out the entire organization and then looking at what it might. Look like different, w- we haven't done that versus we've used, again, the adjustment in place and in time. When we see something or we recognize a difference that that opportunity to make make a change so that. We're not affecting somebody in the job, we might affect somebody that might be coming into the job or or the to changes after somebody's possibly left.
I know it's not a very popular uh discussion, but I still think that I did the same thing as a manager. Operations with MCA and Capital Records, so I'm going to do, ask you to do what I used to do, and I appreciate your answer, thank you, Madam Mayor.
So just if I might add on, just one one thing, Madam Mayor, and and I want to say this to all of my my colleagues, I I don't know if we ever find the conversation uncomfortable versus we. We find the conversation what we should be doing, like i- if if this doesn't look this way, like what would it look like, and I I think the the reference to. You you know, the the Public Information Coordinator was the the result of that type of conversations, is what, what, what can't we do and what don't we have? Skill sets and resources to do, you know, uh, Ms. Wells might is another classic example of that, where I think. You know, with council and and administration saying, w- we could do more of these things to better effect if. We had these dedicated professional qualified resources. And then that's where I I think, just through our earlier comments, everybody recognizing that we see real progress with with both of those areas. Due to the professionals, I think, that are in those roles, if if if, I if I think that would put a better emphasis on maybe my my comments than than anything.
Thank you, Jeff, appreciate it, Madam Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, no, that's that's good, th- thank you, Mr. Clark, for that, strategic, strategic, uh, Counselor Hollingsworth.
Uh, thank you, Your Worship, uh, just a question. Jeff, on page ninety. When I look at the employee comparison, and I know we already have talked about it, but last year, let's see, where am I going here? Uh, so twenty twenty, we hired technically eighteen students, but we didn't really hire them, correct? Because of COVID, is that making sense?
We did hire them, we had students at various departments, we didn't hire the traditional complement of students because of. We did not have a traditional program offering um in in most aspects of the city from that recreational standpoint.
Okay, so in twenty nineteen or twenty eighteen, we had nineteen students, twenty nineteen, we had seventeen students. Last year, we had eighteen students, what did we do, did we do anything different in terms of? Like our day-to-day function, I I guess the question I'm asking or puzzled a little bit, and I'm going to go a little further with this, is that. We had nineteen, then, like clearly, we didn't do as much as we've done in the past, for, for example, I. Don't believe we offered a parks program for the kids, I know the lifeguards worked on a. Much more scaled-down version of what they typically would do because of COVID. So why is it, if we didn't do as much as we used to do? Why would we have still maintained that same, pretty close to the same compliment? Which gets me to the next, well, I'll ask you, I'll ask that question first and then a subsequent question. Like, we didn't do as many things as we've typically done, why did we maintain a pretty close to the same compliment?
So I I would need Ms. Bailey's help on the overall one, because of the, just the programs we do um and did have, like, we we did run. Number of pools that was greater than those, the the nineteen.
Typically, though, they have five kids per pool, and I thought we ran three kids per pool last year and didn't open all the pools we normally would. Just as an example, and I'm not trying to just nail the pools, I'm talking, trying to use that as a ref- as an example, I guess.
Madame CFO?
Through you, Madam Mayor, if we're looking at uh the summary where we're comparing the employee comparison for students. In two thousand and nineteen, we had seventeen students, and in twenty twenty, we budgeted for eight. Understanding that when we did the budget.
Okay, pardon me, forgive me, am I reading this, am I reading this wrong on page ninety? Twenty eighteen to twenty-one employee comparisons, number of students. Twenty twenty, we had eighteen, twenty nineteen, you said eight? Well, why am I getting, why am I, okay, that was in twenty nineteen, in twenty twenty, on page ninety, you have eighteen.
Correct, so there was a one, one increase?
Yes, why do we ma- so the question is, why do we maintain the same compliment if we weren't running the same programming?
So the budget would have been put together at the end of twenty nineteen. And at that time, COVID hadn't hit.
Right.
At, and so the increase of the one was a program. In uh bylaw services and building where they added a point five and a point five for student. And they may want to speak to that uh when they do their presentation, that was the the only change from uh two thousand and nineteen to twenty twenty. In twenty twenty-one, we did bring down the students, understanding that COVID was. Was, we we hadn't seen a an end yet, uh, but at the time of council review, we added those students back in. So we added a hundred and eight thousand dollars uh to the budget uh through budget deliberations in hopes that there will be a summer program.
Um, I'm gonna, okay, that's fine, Your Worship, I'll corner Ms. Bailey and ask her for clarification, but that's fine.
Yeah, that's fine, Madame C A O.
Hey, if I could, Madam Mayor, if I could make a suggestion, if we're going to ask questions that are about specific departments and staffing, whether it's part-time, full-time students. It is really best for the managers to answer those questions, but I think also to kind of keep on our agenda and keep the the flow going. Uh, hold those questions until we get to that department, and then the department manager can explain what's going on with what we had planned last year, what we're planning this year. And how COVID may have affected that, because we're anticipating we'll have to provide some of that detail to council.
Any other questions? Counselor Bergerol?
Thank you, so this one, I think, is is general enough uh and related, we uh. How is the decision made when a a new position comes to council or is is decided internally by administrator?
Madame Seo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, so uh typically, if it's a newly created position, we would typically include that in the budget process for discussion. The one exception to that that we ran into last year was with our landfill site. So in twenty twenty, we lost a contracted employee. But then also looking at the landfill site and not being able to properly monitor. The activity of the site and the materials that were being dumped into the landfill, we had recruited a couple of resources. To properly um staff and control that part of that facility. But outside of that, increases in staffing typically are done through the budget process. During the year, however, if a vacancy opens, we take that vacancy and we will. Look at it as an opportunity for what is the, what is the opportunity to do something different with the position if we should. Um, and and we will do that, other things that will happen is it could be that a department might have a vacancy. And it's creating some challenges for them, um, it could be, uh, someone is off on um, uh, long-term leave. There's going to be other components where we might try to bring in a contract, a temporary or part-time resource to help provide relief to the department during those. Occurrences, but for the most part, salaries and benefits are managed overall from a a bottom-line perspective to the budget, so we're. Our goal is never to go over what we've planned for salaries and benefits.
Thank you, so when we look at the. Now, I think this covers all departments too, so now would be the time, the. Last year at budget, we had nine positions that were filled before it got to budget time, is that because all of those positions? Fell within the context of the salaries and benefits that we already had?
I, through you, Madam Mayor. I, through you, Madam Mayor, I would say that, that, that seems like that's what we would have done without any specifics. That's what we would have done.
Okay, so let me, let me rephrase it. We last year added twelve positions uh. Twelve full-time positions, and where some of those were part-time hours that were moved. That's what I mean, those positions that go from part-time hours to a full-time. Don't need to come to council because it's falling under that budget item?
Madam CEO.
Through you, Madam Mayor. I would say that if we, yeah, so what we did at the Glenstone Lodge, for example, so I believe that that primarily is the uh one area. Where we had difficulty having enough PSWs or scheduling properly at the Glenstone Lodge, so we had converted. Part-time hours to full-time positions, try and add some stability to that area for recruitment. The cost at the end of the day would not have, the cost at the end of the day would not have been significantly more than what we would have paid from a part-time perspective. In fact. Um, in some of those areas too, what we're seeing with part-time people is the continuous inefficiency of recruiting and recruiting and recruiting. Because we're getting part-time resources, but then they're not, they're not always available when we need them. So then coming up with a more. Um, full-time planned schedule, we were able to better fill several positions at the Glenstone Lodge, so we're converting part-time to full-time. We did something uh similar, I believe, in uh, uh, several years ago, we might have done something similar. I'm not sure if it was in transit, uh, Jeff. Or even in paramedic services, but we might have made some of those changes as well where we had. Uh, part-time people working essentially full-time hours and then converted them to full-time for stability.
We, we absolutely did with, the lodge has been an area, recreation has been another, um, do, doing our best to make sure that. You, you know, we're not in a situation with precarious employment where we can't offer or deliver the services we have, so. What we strive to do instead of having these hodgepodge of, of, of different hours that might go with part-timers that if it made sense and there was a business case and we all, and we had to. Produce a business case when we make that decision. Is this the better of the two items to do? And so we make that determinant as we go of, you know, if, if this makes sense to rule over. Because we'd be better off with full-time resources versus part-time. And part-time is, is there for flexibility, but if, if it's better served for our, you know, from a service standpoint with. Um, you, you know, full-time resources, then that will often drive the decision.
I think I'm frozen.
Yes, you are. Are you done?
Yeah, I'll, I'll move on. Thank you.
Thank you. Next presentation, please.
So that would still be me and uh, loo- looking at kind of the, the HR group for twenty twenty-one. Um, we continue to try to build, you know, a more robust leadership and development program that, you, you know, in, in this day and age with the. The competition for resources um. Both in and outside of the organization being, you, you know, much, much more um in need for the coming future. You know, one of the things that we often believed is it's making sure that we can grow our own and promote our own people and instead of constantly having to. To go out and recruit because it's just not a viable alternative, I think, in the long term, uh, for the, for the foreseeable future anyways. Uh, likewise, we've, we've tried to do a lot of work with safety, a lot of the work over the past year, um, and then to this point, and let's say. For the remainder of this year is, is, is safety regarding COVID protocols, you know, we had to figure our way through those. As you know, we never, we've never closed down, so we were managing, you know, the right amount of safety appropriation, distancing, PPE required, you know, it required quite. Still requires quite a bit of monitoring and paperwork to track and whatnot. So we maintain our diligence doing those types of things. Um, we've had a payroll system over the course of last year. Again, we need from our own standpoint, what our own human resources policies. Um, need to look like, those need to be updated and, and kind of brought forward to, uh, to, to the environment we're working in right now. Um, you know, this year, we will also begin, it seemed like yesterday, but we'll be back in bargaining. Again, um, throughout the latter part of this year, so that will take up a lot of uh, of um. Dedicated time and energy to, to getting through those processes as well. So I, I think that would be um. Yeah, so I, I, again, it'd happily be available for any questions, it's uh, just from a departmental overview standpoint.
Any questions? We, uh, Mr. Clark, get the question sometimes as to. Why there wasn't um, as in maybe some other municipalities, why there wasn't more layoff of city employees during the pandemic? What's, what's been your response to that? I know you've had that question as well.
Thank you for, for it. We, we, I, to be honest, we, I, I, my set, we needed, and especially the lodge, you, you know, where. Um, it, 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 it grew legs quick, I mean, you know, and, and I, I make that point of. You know, we always had a plan, but the best laid plan, you know, tends to shimmy when rubber meets the road. And I think with our ability to, you know, exercise and use other resources in an area. That we're already here, that we're familiar with, you know, essentially the city, they weren't, they might not have been familiar with the lodge, but they're not, they're not becoming a new employer, it's still the city. And to be honest with you, I, from my own standpoint, I don't remember anybody saying um, they didn't find the experience rewarding. And to be honest with you, the redeploying of the people only reinforces that development idea I just spoke of. About exposing and, and doing more lateral movement, having people be exposed to different. Roles and functions within the city, for one, their own development, the city is better off because people become more interested in, in, they're, they're curious about doing other things. And when they're curious about doing other things, I, I, I personally would, I would tell to anybody, they're more energetic about doing other things, about. Service levels and whatnot. So the people that went into, you know, that area, not only for the lodge, you, you know, and. Uh, because it's obviously, it was a really important service that we, we had to make sure that we got right, zero room for error. You, you know, we still had people that were dedicated and wanting to go count sidewalks and do a number of other things and the, you know, I. Did it with a smile and, you, you know, we're, we're quite dedicated to making sure that what they were doing was, was good work. So I, I, I would say. Um, it, humbly, I would say, I, I thought it was absolutely the right thing to do and I, I would still think it's the right thing to do, my opinion.
Thank you. That's what I asked for, so thank you. Appreciate that. Uh, next presentation.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Uh, the next presentation is for financial services. Uh, the organizational chart for financial services can be found on page thirty-six. Uh, there are a total of thirty-five employees in financial services. Uh, we are located in four municipal buildings at the civic complex, City Hall, Justice Building, and at the Glenstirdun Lodge. Further to Counselor Gardner's question, at the time of budget, we did know of one vacancy, one vacancy that would. Uh, still be vacant uh going into the new budget year, twenty twenty-one. And what we did was, understanding that we budgeted uh for that employee for three quarters of the year. Knowing that we would have a savings if we budgeted for a full year. So not that that employee, that position wasn't required, it definitely was. Uh, but we knew that that employee would not start Jan. One, and so reduced our salary and, and benefits accordingly. Uh, the divisions of financial services are accounting and auditing, purchasing services, we have our tax department. Insurance and risk management and information technology and communications or ITT services. Um, the accounting division provides financial information to all city departments, or a support department. To counsel taxpayers, external auditors. Uh, external users, including the provincial and federal governments, as well as financial institutions. Our staff coordinate the annual budget uh for the city. We perform internal audits and reconciliations. We prepare and submit numerous uh financial and statistical. Uh, submissions to the province and we complete the city's year-end financial statements and financial information return. We have had more and more reporting requirements and uh twenty twenty. Even added more to that with uh the funding that we've received from the, from the government for COVID, so staff have been managing through that. In two thousand and seventeen, the city adopted its first long-term financial plan. And by utilizing this plan, we've incorporated a long-term perspective into our financially, financial uh planning process. Uh, including multi-year budgeting, asset management planning, and the utilization of reserves and debt financing, as we've discussed. In two thousand and nineteen, we completed the city's first financial condition assessment report. Uh, through the use of key indicators, the financial condition assessment is another tool that we use. To evaluate and analyze performance. The accounting staff are currently implementing uh its new accounting system for the corporation. They've already completed the accounts receivable, cashier, tax, utility, and with the HR staff, the payroll modules. And this year will complete uh the accounts payable, purchasing and general ledger modules. Um, our next division is purchasing su- services. Uh, they're responsible for the procurement of a large variety of goods, services, and construction. This includes, but is not limited to uh the preparation of. Uh, and issuance of requests for quotations, requests for proposals, requests for tenders, and the award and supply. And service uh contracts. Uh, purchasing services works to ensure that the city procure goods and services. And construction contracts in a cost uh effective manner, uh while encouraging an open, fair, and transparent, competitive building and bidding environment. Uh, although procuring goods and services in construction is the primary uh role of this area. They also are responsible for asset disposal, vendor performance. Uh, administration of the corporate P card program and signing authority are, are also key services that they perform. In two thousand and nineteen, uh, purchasing services updated its procurement policies, consolidating uh thirteen policies into two policies. Our procurement of goods and services policy and the supplier discipline policy, and currently they're working. At expanding our bids and tenders portal uh to include receiving proposals electronically. Our tax department is responsible for uh preparing uh billing and collecting uh all property taxes, municipal and education. For just under seventeen thousand uh roll numbers. We do interim billing in February and final billing in June. We also do water and wastewater billings for approximately uh. Just over nineteen thousand dollars flat rate customers and approximately three hundred and ten meter customers. We bill twice a year. We issue tax receipts and tax information to legal firms, banks, realtors, and others. Uh, we issue supplementary tax notices three or four times a year, depending on activity. Uh, we assist the public with uh matters relating to assessment and taxes. We administer the tax rebate program and uh the tax department provides key support uh to the budgeting process. The insurance risk management division is responsible for ensuring that the city has the necessary. Uh, insurance and risk management procedures in place to limit the city's exposure to uh risks associated with insurance claims and litigation. Uh, they're responsible for uh the procurement and maintenance of accept, acceptable uh insurance coverage, suitable. Uh, to meet the needs of the corporation. They administer the claims. On average, the city receives about sixty or seventy claims a year. And the continuing awareness uh and action related to risk management. Uh, they also ensure that the procedures are in place to limit any exposure to risks associated with insurance claims and litigation. Our uh, other division is ITT services. Uh, there's a centralized resource for providing computers, internet, and telecommunications services to city departments. ITT's day-to-day responsibilities include managing technology projects and ensuring that. Enterprise systems, application, networks, end-user devices, communication. Systems which support the operations of the city are continuously available and operating effectively. The IT division provides services to over five hundred users. And a data center providing network connectivity for twenty-three office locations. Uh, services include hardware and software, technical support, network design and implementation, uh, internet, web. Uh, information security, wireless and mobile technology, and information communication technology, technology uh policy and support. The staff uh provide uh the provision and support of four hundred and seventy desktop telephones. A hundred and thirty mobile devices and seven hundred desktop laptops and tablets. The IT division also hosts the disaster recovery site platform and remote environments. They manage uh the transition to cloud-based applications to ensure appropriate and consistent use of cloud-based technology throughout uh the city. The uh division manages um these systems for the duration of the life cycle. Uh, through purchasing, maintenance, and eventual redeployment recycling. ITT also provides technical leadership, support, and education services uh to city departments and council for computer systems and networks and applications. They receive over uh four thousand nine hundred tickets or about twenty tickets per day through their help desk. Uh, the work from um ITT ranges from the purchase of a computer. To the installation of electronic fare boxes at transit, the servicing requirements for the municipal works yard project. To the installation and maintenance of specialized software such as roads patrol program or building inspection software. Uh, through uh Office three, uh, three sixty-five. The project that they've completed, uh, staff moved the city's email from Lotus Notes to Outlook and has implemented MS Teams. And will be implementing other uh Microsoft applications uh throughout this year and next. They've also initiated our SharePoint uh platform for the corporation, and they're now working with the clerks department. To implement an electronic documents retention management system for the corporation. Uh, currently, ITT is working with RSM Consulting to complete the city's first ITT master plan. Um, technology plays a significant uh role in the delivery of city services and the ITT master plan. Will look at the city's current state and future sta- state to ensure. Uh, that it's in alignment with the broader objectives of uh the corporation. And this will ensure that emerging technology and trends are assessed and adopted. In a way that complements the delivery of city services and drives efficiencies in city operations. The ITT master plan will be presented to council uh this summer. Um, and financial services itself, uh, we sit on a number of committees. Uh, so we provide administrative support and technical assistance to the audit committee. The community agency review committee, CPAG, and Cornwall Area Housing Corporation.
Questions? Counselor Hollingsworth and then Counselor Bergeron.
Uh, one quick question, Ms. Bailey, you mentioned that your department is in four different buildings. Would you be more efficient if you were in one building? Or could you be more efficient if you were in one building?
It, that's a very good question, and I think um. I would look at that at a, at a corporate service level where one counter can answer all questions. It's not something that we can do with our current uh. Physical buildings that we have, like we don't fit in one space. And so it would uh lead to efficiencies if we could, uh, though there are some staff that really should be. Located where they are, and I'll take our two staff at the Glenstirdun Lodge who provide direct support for Glenstirdun Lodge and, and probably should. our two staff at the Glenstirdun Lodge who provide direct support for Glenstirdun Lodge and, and probably should operate from the Glenstirdun Lodge. But yes, if, if the city had the means to create that one counter service, I think that that would be beneficial for the corporation. We don't have the infrastructure to accommodate that.
Has it ever been discussed at senior management meetings, or is it just something that everybody has never really pointed out?
We have discussed it, but I, I may have that question directed to the CIO.
Madam CEO.
Yeah, so I think that, like, we do have part of financial services here at City Hall. So the question could be, you know, do you take that counter and move it down to the civic complex? There are accessibility benefits to being here at City Hall as well. So I, I think that if we're looking at space, we do have financial services that spread out a little bit. Find it, there's a contingent of financial services that's also at the Social Services, Social and Housing Services Office that is, I think, important for them to be close to that group to provide assistance and full-on reporting and budgeting. But I think the one, the one area that is probably the most obvious would be the taxation group here at City Hall that are downstairs. There would be benefits to having them at the civic complex. However, there is a space requirement, and then there's also an accessibility requirement where I think it's easy for people to come in here at City Hall.
Okay, that being said, if we ever, just on an outside, do we have any kind of number as to what it would take to consolidate the finance or most of the finance department that could work better in one space? I realize there's some sort of satellite operations that may need to continue. But do we have any kind, I know Ms. Bailey referenced the amount of money we have. Have we ever looked at what it would cost to try to retrofit a particular building to accommodate that department?
Madam CEO.
No, at this point, we have not.
Fair enough. Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Ms. Billy. Thank you, Madam CEO.
Counsel Bershur.
Thank you. I was gonna ask a similar question, so let me take it one step further. One of the silver linings of, of COVID is that people are getting more and more comfortable working from home. Have we as a city looked at a policy for having less offices and allowing people to work from home? It doesn't have to be specific to this department, but I think it's relevant to what Counsel Hollingsworth was getting to.
Madam CEO.
So no, we have not. I mean, we have, we have been, I think, flexible with our staff to allow individuals to work from home based on what has occurred through COVID. And those that can work from home and do so effectively, they've been provided with some of those opportunities. At the end of the day, I think we do feel that there is productivity by having people physically present in areas for ease of access of communication, collaboration, and working items. But we have not yet ventured down the path of looking at people working remotely as opposed to in an office and what it would save in cost for that office space. So one of the, I guess, one of the obvious examples would be social services. Social services right now is doing everything with their clientele virtually or remotely, although they're physically working in our offices. But it would be, it would be an exercise to undertake to try and understand what the cost savings would be and the productivity and being able to manage those employees virtually.
Any follow-up, Counsel?
Yeah, more, more in terms of process. So technically, that would be the type of thing that would be a request from council or a report or a new business item. It's not necessarily a current policy to look at.
Madam CEO.
Through you, Madam Mayor. So, yeah, I mean, it, it certainly, we could have something come from council. I think if we thought that there was a need or a merit to doing that or looking at that, I think that administration would also want to come to council, approach council on that sub- subject matter as well. So I don't look at it as just being driven by council. If we thought at some point in time that we thought was the right thing to do and look at it from cost savings perspective, then we should also be bringing it forward to council to say we'd like to undertake a review and look at this and maybe try and determine if council might be agreeable, depending on what the outcomes were or what the, you know, what, what we're able to determine.
So, thank you. I, can I get maybe a very rough percentage of how much of our staff are currently working from home? Is it minimal? Okay, thank you.
Next presentation.
Through you, Madam Mayor. If I could take you to page thirty-nine and page forty. I don't have a lot to present for non-departmental. This is not a, I'll say, a service area. It, it just holds the transactional items related to corporate revenue and transfers. So it's like a, an offshoot to financial services and the corporation at large. So if there are any questions for non-departmental, I'll, I'll take them.
Go ahead, Madam CFO.
Our next presenter, Ms. Morgan.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Through you, Madam Mayor. The Social and Housing Services Department, as you're aware, is comprised of three divisions. Our Ontario Works Division, Social Housing and Childcare. The organizational chart can be found on page forty-one. And I would like to point out that the Corlin Area Housing amalgamation will be proceeding January, for January twenty-twenty-two, so we're very excited about that. In terms of the department, I would like to start with some global department comments. Through our two thousand and twenty-one budget discussions, my team remained cognizant of the fact that all three of our divisions have been or will be experiencing some significant programming or funding changes or demand for services in the coming years. And those updates have been presented to council over the past year or so. We have reduced our department FTE count by two from two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-one due to attrition. And in our two thousand and twenty-one staffing complement, we do have a number of vacant positions. However, some of these are due to long-term sick leaves, which require us to maintain. Whereas others have remained vacant pending anticipated surges in programming in the latter half of two thousand and twenty-one. We anticipate that when federal benefits end, the demand for social services will increase. Or it is also helping us with succession planning. And as we move to human service integration, which is where the direction of all three ministries is heading by two thousand and twenty-four. With respect to revenue, each of our divisions receives significant funding allocations from the respective ministries, which in some cases can fluctuate greatly year over year, which can make our annual budget seem pretty quirky from year to year. And with respect to expenses, a few of our division expenses have changed and are more in line with trend and/or perhaps have been relocated to other line items to meet demand. In terms of the individual budget areas, unless council has any questions at this point in time, I would move on to the Ontario Works Division, which is on page forty-two.
Sorry, Ms. Morgan.
All right, that's okay.
Thank you. Your, your first line about you reduced to full-time equivalents because of retirements and resignations. Can you speak to how a department handles that internally? How's the work divided? How does, how do you make a decision of, you know, two people are, are no longer there? The, the workload, I assume, is the same, or has the workload changed in a way that a department can get away with, with having two less people?
Absolutely. Through you, Madam Mayor. So in terms of the particular division that is this affected, it was through our Ontario Works Division. And we have considered a trend in caseload. Although COVID has presented some unique caseload numbers, not just with our area but across the province. And that's largely due to the fed, the availability of federal benefits and less need on social services. When those benefits end, we will expect to see a surge in the demand for benefits. However, when we completed our review, we looked at caseload trends year over year. And historically, even pre-COVID, there has been a decline in the caseloads for social for Ontario Works. And so based on that, and with the staffing complement that we have, we felt we were able to support the reduction of two FTEs.
And then, thank you. You, your department is going to be moving, correct, to a new location next year?
Yeah, through you, Madam Mayor. So it's not our department. It's actually Cornwall Area Housing Corporation. So when our new building opens next October, the space that Cornwall Area currently rents, they will give up that leased space and move into the commercial space in the new building.
Thank you.
Ms. Morgan.
So in terms of the Ontario Works Division, some of the key areas outside of the, the department comments that I've made. So the funding we receive for Ontario Works comes from the Ministry of Community and Social Servi- Children and Community and Social Services. One hundred percent of the benefits for clients is funded through that ministry. And then the cost of administration is shared fifty-fifty with that ministry and then further cost shared with the counties. Our levels, our funding allocation have been frozen at two thousand and eighteen levels. And this is consistent across the board. And we must come within one percent of the budget that we submit to the ministry. So we have a funding allocation. And we're allowed to submit a budget up to that funding allocation. But whatever we submit at year-end, we must come within one percent. And so we try to really come up with a more accurate budget as opposed to just reaching or asking for maximum funding levels so that we're able to manage that a little bit better throughout the year. The Ministry of Community, Children, and Social Services is undergoing a funding review. And in two thousand and twenty-two, it's anticipated that this will be a transition year. And we're expected to receive our funding allocation or the indication of how it will be funded by July with the anticipation that funding changes will occur for two thousand and twenty-three based on employment transformation and life stabilization. So that work is going on with the province right now. And as indicated, many of the other changes to the Ontario Works budget have been based on trends or the addition to some new initiatives like our electronic document management system with the Ontario Works Division.
Thank you. Curious about, because provincial levels of funding are frozen. What does it look like from a city's perspective in terms of lobbying or discussing with the province? What, what is like those, those answers that you just gave in terms of what you think is coming? How do we know that? What's the how do we plan around not knowing if we don't know?
So a number of things, through you, Madam Mayor. One, the ministry has been, especially during COVID, has been quite flexible. And although we've been frozen at two thousand and eighteen levels, there have been the opportunities to ask for one-time funding. And we did ask for one-time funding in two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty. We anticipate that two thousand and twenty-one we will be able to manage. But in terms of caseload forecasting, the ministry does do that as a province. They will do caseload forecasting. And so we anticipate based on that for, caseload forecasting, what might be expected to the year-end for us and, and coming into two thousand and twenty-two. What we don't know is what employment transformation will bring and life stabilization. So right now, employment transformation is only going on in three pilot sites. And once the information is gathered from that, we will have more of an indication. And that's why they're not making any funding changes, permanent funding changes till two thousand and twenty-three, because they're also waiting to see the outcome of the pilot sites for employment transformation.
Thank you. Is it safe to say that the, the decisions on funding are based on per capita or caseloads or the community kind of profile? What can the city do that would impact the, the types of funding or the amount of funding we would receive?
Through you, Madam Mayor. With respect to Ontario Works, it really is based on caseload demand or caseload size as well as cost of administration. So there are those two funding envelopes, if you will. And the benefits, because caseloads can fluctuate greatly from month to month or year to year, a hundred percent of those benefits are ministry-funded. So it wouldn't matter whether our caseload increased by a thousand or reduced by a thousand. The ministry funds that at one hundred percent. In terms of our discretionary benefits, they give us a cost per case on the benefit, and we manage within that based on caseload numbers. In terms of cost of administration, there is a funding envelope that we have to work within. And we try to never exceed that funding allocation. So whatever the ministry funds, the municipality must fund fifty percent of that dollar, seventy cents of which is the city and thirty cents is county. And so for every dollar, we try to maximize at the ministry level. We would need council approval to match that dollar.
Thank you. So one of our strategic plans is to increase population here. So that wouldn't, we wouldn't have more to do or less, less money with more people. It's all kind of tied to the same figures.
At this point in time, that's how the funding is based. Like I said, they are drafting or revising a new funding formula for two thousand and twenty-three based on employment transformation and life stabilization. I do sit on that committee with the province. And so right now, they have hired Deloitte and Touche to review what that funding formula will look like for two thousand and twenty-three. And many service managers sit on that committee as well to offer input on the impact that these future funding changes will have to municipalities across the province.
Counsel Mac, did you have your hand up?
Oh, yeah, it's a Monday question. When it comes to basic funeral and burial costs, I remember one time, many years ago, funeral homes bid on this. Is that still the case, or the person, aggrieved family has a choice of funeral homes? Or is it one specific with a minimum or a maximum cost?
Ms. Morgan.
Through you, Madam Mayor. So we set the rates for funeral expenses for social assistance recipients. And it's up to the individual funeral home across the area to determine if they will provide service based on the rate that we offer.
Back to you, Ms. Morgan.
In terms of our childcare division, as council will remember, there were a number of reports that we brought to council in terms of the funding change that the Ministry of Education has announced. Certainly, that is the biggest change to the childcare budget for two thousand and twenty-one. Effective January of this year, fifty percent of the, the rate of funding was then going to be cost shared with municipalities. The remaining twenty, ten percent was our general allocation, and then it's anticipated next year that ten percent gets further reduced to five percent. So there'll be another impact to the childcare budget next year. That, and in addition to trends, those are the biggest changes to the childcare budget for two thousand and twenty-one.
Go ahead, Ms. Morgan.
In terms of social housing, this is one of the budgets, as I mentioned earlier, where the funding allocation from the Ministry of Municipal Affairs can fluctuate from year over year. As an example, even though we had planned our two thousand and twenty and then our two thousand and twenty-one budget, due to COVID, we've received three allocations of social service relief funding, all of which were allowed to keep a percentage for cost of administration. And so when those hundred percent provincial programs come out, they are based. It's difficult to determine how they're based, whether it's based on size of the area or demand for program. But most of the special initiatives or special programs are funded a hundred percent by the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing. More so in terms of the social housing subsidies for ongoing rental subsidies. Those typically are funded more by the municipal contribution than they are from the municipal. And in terms of those subsidies, federal funding will drop off. And if council remembers, as mortgages are paid for our providers and the federal funding drops off, then any allocation for mortgages that the municipality subsidizes are then in turn reinvested into the social housing regeneration fund, which will help with future builds. And other than that, the majority of the other changes within the social housing budget again have been based on trend.
Councilor Bergeron?
Thank you. We've, we've spoken a little bit at council about homelessness in Cornwall. Can you give us a high level overview of, of how we're doing in terms of not just, you know, the budget that we have, but just in general and, and maybe some looking forward or looking into the future, how that would look?
Through you, Madam Mayor. So if this was a pre-COVID conversation, my, my comments would be certainly different than they are now. We have, I would say as a municipality, although we experience homelessness quite a bit of it, I would say at, at pre-COVID would have been hidden homelessness, would have been a lot of couch surfing, a lot of, even the ministry defines us putting somebody in a motel even on a long-term basis as precarious housing or homelessness. So the lack of quality affordable housing in the area certainly has, has not assisted with that. Since COVID, unfortunately, the rate of homelessness in this area has increased exponentially. I, I think that's largely because of right at the onset, the uncertainty of what COVID is, lack of information, lack of vaccines. And so that's created a significant impact on our hospitals and other institutions. It seems to be leveling off slightly with the increase of vaccines, but certainly it's becoming more of a prevalent area, issue in this area. It seems like Eastern Ontario for these types of things seems to be sort of late in coming into these things. And so we try to get ahead of them. Certainly, our housing revitalization plan has identified where our priorities are in addressing new builds and trying to get as many affordable housing units into our system as possible to be able to address this. So we are hoping that it again will become what I would consider more manageable in a post-COVID world, but certainly still an issue. You know, and, and in terms of, you know, we're able to try and work with our existing housing providers, our existing domiciliary providers, plus we have a number of organizations or motels that we work with to try and house individuals even on a long-term basis. But it will become, there will come a point where the, and, and we're starting to see it now where the demand certainly it outweighs the number of available quality affordable housing spaces that we have available in our area.
Thank you. That's a great answer. The, the long-term effects of COVID then are are kind, I mean, it's an unknown, but it, it sounds like the department has that factored in. So that's, that's good to, good to hear. Thank you.
There is Councilor Bergeron also a housing task force, eh? And so that issue will come up, has already come up. We've had one meeting. And certainly the person from the hospital has raised that as an issue. So yes, that, that's going to be discussed at length, I'm sure. I have Councilor Hollingsworth and then Councilor Mack.
Thank you, Your Worship, to you, Ms. Morgan. Do we have any homeless shelters?
Through you, Your Worship. We don't have any traditional homeless shelters per se. We do have arrangements with a number of housing, domiciliary providers or motels in the area. Where if an individual presents as being homeless, we have a number of organizations who have the ability to house individuals in those locations. And then we would certainly in the next business day, we would have staff that would make contact with those individuals to try and secure either those accommodations on a long-term or secure other accommodations on a more permanent basis. But we don't have any traditional shelters per se in this area.
Typically speaking, would a municipality of our size in the province of Ontario have a homeless shelter or are we the norm? Should we have more or less? Where do we fall comparatively speaking?
It's difficult to say again, pre-COVID and, and probably, you know, a couple of years pre-COVID, the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing was trying to get out of the traditional bricks and mortar shelter type situations and trying to find more permanent accommodations for individuals. Since that time, I know specifically in this area, there have been a number of organizations that have gotten together to, to discuss what a shelter may look like. The question becomes who will run it and who will fund it? And trying to find funding from different levels of government and staffing for that is problematic.
Typically, and that was kind of goes to my next question. Typically speaking, let's use the big municipalities, which I realize comparing us to Toronto or Ottawa is a little unfair. But just for reference purposes, typically speaking, who runs, who funds and runs homeless shelters? Is it the municipality? Is it the province or some combination thereof? So how would they normally operate in a bigger community?
Ms. Morgan?
Through you, Madam Mayor. It really does vary. Oftentimes, it's nonprofit organizations that will seek funding from other levels of government to run shelters. Levels of government funding could include Ministry Municipal Affairs and Housing, Ministry Health and Long-Term Care, Ministry of Solicitor General. Those types of ministries would have funding for this type of stuff. But it's typically a nonprofit organization. Sometimes it's the municipality because they will also provide municipal funding to assist in the support of the running of these shelters.
So suffice to say, there is no comprehensive policy coming from any senior level of government saying, this is how we're going to do homelessness across the province or across the country. It's just, everybody sort of muddles their way through. Is that safe to say?
Through you, Madam Mayor. In terms of a, a shelter type situation, there is nothing specific. I can advise that the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, in conjunction with other federal initiatives, has implemented enumeration. Enumeration is the, the count and the maintenance of data on homeless individuals. Certainly, that was supposed to, we did our first one in twenty eighteen, and that was supposed to occur again twenty twenty, and it's supposed to occur every two years after that. Unfortunately, with COVID last year, it was delayed till this year, and we will be implementing another enumeration count in twenty twenty-one. We're at the early stages of developing that because the Ministry Municipal Affairs and Housing has changed the guidelines and criteria by which service managers and municipalities should be following that enumeration process.
Wow, interesting. Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Thank you, Your Worship.
Councilor Mack and then Councilor Eva.
Yeah, picking up on what Dean just talked about, how do you count? How can you get a count of homeless people? A homeless person could have a job, couldn't they, and be living in a motel? Or is it homeless counts only when they're on social services?
Ms. Morgan?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Certainly, when we undertook enumeration in twenty eighteen, it was a new endeavor for us. And there were a number of different types of enumeration counts that municipalities could undertake. There were point-in-time counts, registration weeks and that type of stuff. We decided locally to do a point-in-time count, which was undertaking a number of initiatives in a, in a week-long period. We walked the streets. We went to different nonprofit organizations who work with a lot of individuals who may be homeless. We worked with Social Development Council in conjunction with their survey to try and gather as much information as we could. Certainly, we, lessons learned from that is we did miss individuals who are homeless. We did have a, a fairly surprising count for what we thought at the time. But we recognized we did miss some individuals. And so I believe the ministry has also the reason for their change is that they realized there was too much of a variance among service managers and how they did their enumeration. And so that's why they're being a little more specific this time on how they want us to do enumeration. So they can compare apples to apples this time.
Yeah, I, I saw one report somewhere that they even counted if one of your kids is living in your basement, they're homeless. That's the extreme, isn't it, definition?
Through you, Madam Mayor. So they do define a number of categories that would define somebody as being homeless. Again, lack of stable, quality, affordable housing. So we often would use our motel systems. And even though individuals may be there with a roof over their head month over month, that does count as being homeless. Couch surfing certainly counts as being homeless. I would perhaps quantify that a child living, a dependent adult or an independent adult living in their parents' basement, if it was a legitimate apartment in the parents' basement, would not count as being homeless. But, you know, those weren't, that type of scenario was not something that we considered during our enumeration count in twenty eighteen.
Okay, so it's not the person living in the park. It's, it's, you know, it's not visible.
It, it's visible in addition to the non-visible. So it was quite a variety. And we endeavored to do a number of initiatives to capture both the visible and the non-visible enumeration or homelessness, sorry.
Okay, one quick question. Hypothetical, the police get a report of somebody sleeping in Lamru Park. They go over and they find out he doesn't have any fixed address and that. What happens to that person?
So through you, Madam Mayor. So through the initiatives we have set up with a number of our organizations within SDNG, the police, even the police themselves can present that individual to the hospital just to have a minor assessment in terms of any medical needs that may, they may need prior to being housed either at one of our domiciliaries or perhaps even in a motel hotel. And then our staff, as soon as possible on the next business day, would reach out to that individual to determine what their long-term needs would be.
Okay, thanks.
Councilor Eva?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I definitely want to just make some comments on the homelessness situation, but I would agree with Ms. Morgan that over the pandemic, it has been something that most service agencies and nonprofit agencies have been trying to address. But it's very difficult to find an nonprofit willing to tackle such a large issue on their own without guaranteed funding. So what we've seen is Mohawk Council of Akwasasni has stepped forward and is developing the Healing Center in Cornwall. And that is a shelter which will support not just, you know, housing needs, but will support individuals through their, the growth process in terms of, you know, literacy, addictions, mental health, all of the services. So really, an all-encompassing service. And of course, their main demographic will be indigenous individuals or, or residents of Akwasasni, but they are not going to say no to anyone. They're developing a state-of-the-art facility, which I've had the opportunity to, to see. I'm not sure if they're fully open yet. I think the goal was April, May, so there's probably more information to come on that. But they will certainly serve as residents of our community if they are in need. And from what I've seen, it, it is an incredible facility and will certainly support a lot of our residents. I know right now, what sometimes happens, not a lot of cases, if, if folks outstay their welcome at the domiciliary hostels, they sometimes are shipped off to another community with an actual shelter without any kind of time limits. And, and that's really unfortunate as their, you know, small support systems are here. They, they may have friends and family that they can rely on if they're at a shelter here, but they don't in, in another community. So having that space that Mohawk Council is developing will be a great addition to the homelessness services that are already provided by the Social Housing Services Department, like Chippy, like, you know, all of the homelessness prevention programs that are in dire need right now because of the, the state of our whole housing situation in our, in our community. Anyways, just wanted to add my two cents.
And if I may, Mayor Clama, you know, Councilor Eva makes a good point. And certainly, you know, earlier I had indicated that, you know, in a post-COVID environment, homelessness may be more manageable. And that, you know, probably wasn't the best word to use. Certainly, it may bring it down to more realistic levels of what homelessness is in our areas so that we have a better handle on what the actual issue, you know, the issues are. And certainly, the level of demand that we would need to concentrate efforts on in a post-COVID environment.
What I heard you say, Ms. Morgan, is that it's complicated. You know, this is not one solution. You're not just going to build something and then it fixes it. You know, I believe Councilor Hollingsworth used the words muddle through. Well, it is, it speaks to how complex this is. And it's good to see that there, you know, are different areas that could inspire us to, to figure things out, right? And to try and bring people together to have conversations at different levels. So, thank you. Any other comments? Ms. Morgan, was there anything else?
Nope, that is it for me, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Next presentation?
Good evening, Council.
Welcome, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you very much. So I'm quite happy to be here. So the lodge is a hundred and thirty-two bed long-term care home. That includes two respite beds, and we're regulated under the Ministry of Health and Long-Term Care Act. Since the pandemic, the ministry has covered, converted the two respite beds temporarily to long-stay beds due to the long waiting lists of people looking for accommodation. Overall, we have ninety-five full-time employees and eighty-five, eighty-eight part-time employees for a total of one hundred and eighty-three employees. Our biggest department is Nursing Department. That represents roughly sixty percent of our workforce. Our funding for the lodge, so the ministry gives us funding for nursing care supplies and equipment. That's based on the Resident Case Mix Index that is established by the ministry. Current ministry model is looking at resident care needs for two years ago. So the, currently with the, they're looking at re-changing their model to have better funding. It also covers recreation salary, supplies and equipment, raw food, and as well as supplemental funding for minor capital, capital funding. What is unfunded through that program is maintenance and facility costs, operating costs, heat, hydro, water, administrative costs, dietary, housekeeping, maintenance and administrative supplies, salary and equipment. We also have at the lodge our community outreach service that offers day away program, Meals on Wheels, which we received. We got an increase of thirty percent clientele over the last year. We also have the telephone insurance program. And since the pandemic, we had to switch from day away to online recreational programming. So which we are lending iPads for those that do not have internet or to provide them service, as well as a lending library where we provide them supplies and equipment, exercise peddlers and other activity supplies. And we're also doing porch visits for some seniors in the community. For our operation budget, their salaries and benefits, most of the, there's a, if you look at the number, the four hundred and ninety thousand, a lot of it is through vacation time and increased benefit cost increase. We took two part-time positions in one in recreation, one in outreach and created a full-time position. There's also the salary of a nurse practitioner that was added, but it also reduced our services and rent expense. And we also did a readjustment of the overtime cost to coincide with our three-year average for the salaries. Purchase of goods, there was a slight increase in food costs due to, to the thirty percent increase in Meals on Wheels. And services and rents, there's been a decrease due to charges of nurse practitioner that are now under the salaries and benefits. And revenues represents the county transfers and ministry revenue increases for, expected for twenty twenty-one. And that's it for the lodge.
Merci. Councilor Bergeron?
Thank you. I have a couple of really high-level questions. You know, we, we are generally speaking mandated to, to have Glensore Dun Lodge or, or a long-term care facility in Cornwall. But there are others. Does the province fund other long-term care? Is, is there revenue coming generally speaking, to the other facilities in the city?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Yes, they are. So any long-term care facilities that are literally under the Long-Term Care Home Act are receiving funding through nursing, personal care. Other, there's the other accommodation envelope, PSS envelope and raw food.
So, and why then would we, would the, why would we only have one long-term care facility? Why wouldn't we be managing a couple of them? It's super high-level, I know.
I'd love to comment on that, but I agree. I really, and I think will be right now, the act, through you, Madam, Madam Mayor. The act says that there's each area of counties or a city Um, the act says that there's each area of counties or a city has to have at least one uh, long-term care facility they have to manage. Uh, should the city be open to open another long-term care facility that, you know, could be uh, a route to explore um, of those that you may not redevelop. Um, but that would be a discussion that council will, I guess, and the counties would decide.
That's why I said high level. Uh, it it relates more to the fact that the population pyramid of of our, of Cornwall is getting older. Do we have enough beds? Uh, do we have enough long-term care in the city for what is coming over the next twenty years, which is, which is why I asked that that first question.
Uh, through you, Madam Mayor, I don't know if um, Mark Wallow could answer, but there's a couple of other long-term care facilities in the area that are redeveloping uh, such as Hartwood, Parisian Manor, that are growing their capacity. Um, uh, so they're gonna, in the next couple of years, I don't know in the, if there's new developments in the counties, but for the city of Cornwall, uh, I know that these two facilities are are expanding and, yeah.
Mr. Baller, did you want to add anything?
Uh, I I I'm certainly not the expert on the subject, but I can speak to uh, what is happening in terms of new construction. Uh, so there are three facilities. Two uh, very soon will be constructing. One is of course under construction on Nick Knapp Drive, and that is the existing Parisian Manor that would be relocating to that. Uh, also, there is a a project by Rivera on Tollgate Avenue that is close to our water tower that would be, um, I believe formerly called Hartwood. Um, and so I've got the, I don't have the most recent name there, but the one on Eleventh Street. And then thirdly, there is another project that is uh, being looked at in a preliminary way uh, at another location in Cornwall, not yet confirmed. But uh, so those are two that will uh, uh, come on uh, to the scene uh, very soon. And I suppose from a planning perspective, uh, some conversations will have to be had with respect to what will happen with the existing buildings and uh, properties.
Madam CEO, did you want to add anything?
Um, I was just gonna say, I don't think we have strategically as a, as a counselor, council and administration looked at whether or not there's uh, any interest in the municipality to, you know, expand on having an additional municipal uh, long-term care facility. So uh, to sort of answer part of his question, we haven't, we haven't gone down that path.
Counselor Bergeron?
Yeah, thank you. Look, it's a, it's a big path and it's more, um, you know, the the question has kind of been answered through the the three, uh, I just, I suppose I'm curious if there are other long-term care facilities coming on board. Is there a central number of of beds that the city or the the counties need to have? And, you know, if private long-term care facilities are covering some of that, do we know what were that balances of of how many beds are needed versus how many we have or or rooms or whatever the term is?
Madam CEO.
I think I'm gonna ask Stephen to speak to how people get placed in the long-term care homes. So the LYN controls that list. I don't know if we know how many people might be on the waiting list. Stephen?
Yeah, through Madam Mayor, um, we have at the lodge roughly three hundred uh, people waiting uh, residents, waiting to be admitted for long-term care. Process for long-term care is they have to apply through the LYN. Um, and then the client is asked to put five choices on their list. So their name will appear on five homes list. So I may have three hundred people on my list, but they always are either probably living in another long-term care facility already. Um, but at the moment, we do have some clients that um, are, have been on our list since a couple of years. And also depends, uh, their admission is also depends on their level of care. So the more care they require, the the higher they're going to be on the list. Uh, again, the the depends on spousal reunification. Uh, if it's a crisis from the community, a crisis from the hospital, uh, right now, there's um, with the crisis, the COVID crisis, there's a lot of um, pushing to relieve the clients from the hospitals. So we're getting a lot of clients right now from the hospitals. So, but to answer your question, Counselor Bergeron, um, there's, the ministry doesn't have a kind of a a ratio of how many for-profit, non-for-profit municipal homes that are required in the region. Um, it all depends on who is asking for beds.
Thank you. That's very clear.
Those are, those are interesting questions, eh? And there, there are reports now in the wake of COVID, you know, comparing where deaths occurred, what happened, the the difference between private sector and public sector. So these are conversations we're certainly going to continue to be having. Yeah, for sure. I have Counselor Gardner and then I have Counselor McDonald. Counselor Gardner.
Just basically to build on what Mr. Golden said, a couple of years ago, there was an issue uh, with the number of people on the waitlist. And I spoke to the LYN and actually the standard freeholder carry, it's the SDNG and um, and Prescott Russell, there were eight hundred people on a waiting list to get into a senior's home or or a Glenn Stordun home type place. And and I guess the issue was at the time that the buildup of senior citizens that are in the hospitals waiting to go is is taking up room in the hospitals for what needs to be done to people who need a hospital. So I I'm, I'd really like to see us as a council move towards discussing with the province what kind of funding we might be able to get to uh, increase the number of beds because eight hundred, then I don't know if Mr. Golden can answer that question now. I don't know how many people are on the waitlist. And this was individuals not being waiting in two different places or three different places. The eight hundred were individuals. So would you happen to know what that number is or would I have to go back to the LYN?
Uh, through you, Madam Mayor, um, I do not have the number for this area, but a couple of weeks ago, we were on a conference call with the, one of the ministers and they were advising that there was roughly across Ontario forty thousand people waiting for long-term care admission. And there was roughly five thousand beds open uh, that needed to be filled. Um, right now with the pandemic, the, they're asking us to keep a few beds open for infection prevention control purposes. The, for example, if ever we admit a resident that needs to be isolated um, that is able to afford just a basic room that was two bed, they're admitted into a private room for that isolation period. And then after that, it can be moved over to um, a shared room. Uh, same if, for example, there's a resident that or that would develop symptoms, I would take the other resident and put them in our uh, I was isolation room to make sure that, you know, we're not infecting the other, the other person. But at the moment, yeah, I do not know what would be the, what's the actual rate for this area.
I think the heartbreaking uh, issue was that if you had a a couple, an elderly couple um, who needed attention or needed to go into a long-term care, you might have uh, his, the man's wife in Prescott and a room in Cornwall somewhere else where you were dealing with couples separation. And that's heartbreaking when people have been together for forty or fifty years. Uh, just to comment, thank you, Madam Mayor, for your indulgence.
If I may, Madam Mayor, um, to Mr. Counselor Gardner's comment, now the LYN has made it the priority as couple reunification. So um, if they're considered as a category one as well, just to um, have uh, spousal reunification as soon as possible. So we do have here at the lodge a couple of spouses.
Thank you. Counselor McDonald.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to pick up on something that you mentioned in terms of some of the analyses of the uh, COVID crisis as it's been enacted across the province. There's been a significant difference found in even survival rates between public and private homes. And I'm just wondering if Mr. Golden sees that with the studies being done provincially, do you think there'd be any long-term um, change or direction, um, regulation of private homes so that they might uh, get the same kind of success rate that publicly funded homes do, nonprofits do? Or do you think that, or is there anything in the industry that you see coming that might make make a change?
Mr. Golden?
Through you, Madam Mayor, um, I believe with the justice, um, that report that was, uh, that came out uh, not too long ago, I think there's going to be changes coming. Uh, that's, you know, the sector has been advocating for many years. Uh, so we are quite happy to see this, especially the four hours of care uh, per day uh, that will be coming. Um, and as well, you know, investing in the the long-term care structure um, and to ensure that, you know, our residents are well-safed, taken care of. Uh, they are private homes that are doing a marvelous job. There are non-for-profit homes that are doing a marvelous job. You know, there's not, I don't think we should put everybody, for-profit facilities all under the the same umbrella. But they are facilities, you know, that are doing their best with what they have and the the money they need. It's not a lucrative uh, very, very lucrative um, sector, long-term care, retirement is, but in long-term care, it's not very lucrative.
Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, just, are are municipally run uh, homes compared to private homes, are they funded the same way for the province at the same level?
Through you, Madam Mayor, uh, they're funded the same for uh, recreation and raw food. The only thing they're not funded the same is for nursing care. So based on what happens at the ministry, we send um, data based on resident care needs on every quarter to the ministry. And then what happens at the ministry on an annual basis, they look at what the level of care was for the whole facility as a whole. Um, the current model looks at what our data was two years ago. So we're funded right now for the care of the residents that we had in our facility in twenty eighteen. Um, so which is a little bit archaic. So they're looking right now at changing that funding model uh, to have it either as a kind of a set fee for everybody. Um, and one thing that ha, um, that I'd like to share as well is that they do not um, fund for residents that have behavior. So we have, there's high-intensity needs that we we get funding for, but it's only covered at ninety-five percent of the cost. Um, so that's another aspect that they're looking at getting. Um, and again, it's, it all depends on documentation that the staff are putting in that will make a significant impact on the type of funding. But there's not um, how it works is there's a pool of money and based on the case mix index of all homes, they look at the average and gave, get a a percentage and that pool of money is then distributed across. So that that the pool of money doesn't increase year over year, that, you know, they're, uh, well, uh, to my knowledge. Uh, but it's, it's, they have one, one pot and they split uh, across.
Okay, thanks. Um, we went through uh, this with my, my wife's mother a few years ago, trying to find a home for her to live. Um, but while we're going through that process, uh, the general feeling we got was that the place to go was the Glen Stordun Lodge. So my question is, is that the level of care thing or is that an affordability thing or is it a combination of the two?
Um, it's through you, Madam Mayor, um, it's, I guess, reputation, level of care, um, number of staffing ratio. If you look at our staffing ratio at the lodge compared to the uh, for-profit, it's uh, very different. Um, especially like if you're looking for for-profit, the money that they're gonna get from the ministry, uh, they're gonna max it out. So they're gonna use every penny that they can. Uh, otherwise they have to send it back to the ministry. Uh, compared to us, we uh, we are fortunate to have um, support and assistance through uh, the city and the counties that can subsidize a portion of the uh, nursing costs for the lodge. So yes, in the end, yes, it may have a good, um, good reputation, but I guess it's a also argue, depending on the strategic positioning of the home and the ages of the home as well. So um, you know, that if you look right now, the lodge is twenty-one years old, but that, you know, it's looks in perfect shape, so.
That was kind of the message I was hoping to, if anybody of the residents are hearing any of this, that that was the portion I wanted them to hear about, uh, as far as our home compared to the others go. Thank you.
Your point, Counselor Bennett, there are a couple of beloved uh, long-term care facilities in town. Um, but Glen Stordun Lodge regularly tops that list and it's um, it's beloved. It really is. Um, it's five twenty-five, I'm just reminding people. Um, Counselor Mack, did you raise your hand?
Yes, I did. Stephen, we, when we talk about the waitlist, um, they're not necessarily people who have to get in right now. We're just going through uh, experience with a member of our family. And uh, both of them, we, we're in the process now of registering them. They're not, they don't need it right now, but the doctors are telling us in one or two years, they're gonna maybe perhaps be into a long-term care. So some people on that list don't need it right now. They're just, I think it's a, you get three years, then you can start over again. Is that right? Is that a fair question?
So through you, Madam Mayor, yes. So what happens, that's your name will be put on the list. When the bed becomes available, they will call you and let you know based on the residence need. Or, you know, if the residence need changes over time, they can just advise uh, the 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 local health upgrading network for, to review the the file. Um, if they refuse to bed, the file is closed and they have to wait six months to reapply. Um, just again, you have to, but if they, usually if they put their name, is that because their needs are there? Um, but yes, there are some residents that do not require that, you know, are still independent, that able to dress themselves, eat by themselves.
Thank you. Counselor McDonald, did you want one more brief comment before we let Mr. Golden go?
A quick one. In in a private for-profit institution that's uh, supported or owned by private investors, where do their profits come from? Can that money that flows to the investors, can it come out of the raw food or the recreation budget? Or does that come from the uh, private fees paid for by the residents? Or uh, all of the above?
Mr. Golden?
Through you, Madam Mayor. So the the profits come from the residents' rent. Um, the the raw food, if they don't use the funds, they have to be sent back, recreation. Uh, all the ministry funding that they receive, they don't use it at a hundred percent. They have to send it back to the ministry. There is a annual reporting that uh, is done and the ministry is very diligent in taking their money back.
Merci, Mr. Golden.
Thank you.
Next presentation.
Oh, it's Bill for Paramedic Services?
Yes, Chief Lister, go ahead.
Hello, everybody. Um, so I'd like to start with uh, uh, how we drive the ambulance service. There's no pun intended in there. Um, so we define our level of service based on response times and it's driven by call volume. Um, so over the, we track it, uh, we, we report on it, we uh, get feedback from the counties and the the city on what the service providers want uh, from the ambulance service. So um, in our budget, um, the staffing models reflect call volume. And in our world, much like you were talking about in the Glen Stordun Lodge, it's um, the age of population, the proportion of people over the age of sixty-five drive our industry. And that proportion is getting larger and larger. So our call volume is exponentially growing. So we're in a growth industry, uh, which we don't really want to be. But we forecast that for the next, probably at least till twenty thirty-nine is what some people are saying. So uh, we use um, studies periodically to determine the staffing levels. Uh, the last one was done uh, last year as part of the modernization study, which was provided to council. Um, and in that study, it uh, used the utilization rates of ambulances to determine that appropriate staffing level, which was about forty percent. So half the time, a little, little more than half the time, you're likely to get an ambulance, which is empty and ready to go. Uh, is the staffing level. So based on that, uh, we were, were overutilized and we needed to add staff to the road to adjust to the call volume. And we were noticing our response times were eroding, they were getting longer and longer. And that was because call volume, we just weren't available enough. So uh, this year in the budget, uh, you'll see eight thousand added um, paramedic hours to the road, which is one twelve-hour shift uh, seven days a week. To start to address this, and this is something that I will revisit every year, um, for the next few years. It is, it is anticipated that we're gonna have to continue. It is, it is anticipated that we're going to have to continue to grow staff or staffing hours over the next couple of years to stay with the curve or, or because we're, we're not really ahead of the curve in any way, we're just trying to maintain. We never add staff until we've addressed every issue that we can related to staffing, which includes things like off, offload delay, which some of that was mentioned earlier with the Glenstone Lodge. A second program that we run to help with, with the community and the aged is our community paramedic program, which is seeing fundamental growth, which answers some of the questions that were raised earlier. So we deal with people who are on waitlists for long term care or in the hospital on long term care. That the goal is to try and treat them in home for as long as they can safely. And the difference between that and the nine one one paramedic side is this is funded a hundred percent through the ministry to try and address the, the shortage of beds in the area. In the Champlain Lynn, which is a little bigger than Cornwall SDNG, they estimate that there's somewhere short of seven thousand beds in the area. So we're trying to help people stay in their homes as long as they can safely. And this is a fairly new program, we've been running a base of this for seven years, but this year it really took off. And there's three new programs in it which require new staffing. So the, there's the base funding, which is basically all of them are referral services. Where somewhere along the system, we get a call to say, do an assessment or check up on these individuals. And we go out and manage the individual in their home as best, up to the, the point of the resources. So in that, in that vein, in the, in the community paramedics, along with the, the eight thousand hours on the community side, on the paramedic side, sorry, we're adding five more staff there, which is a hundred percent funded at the request of the Ministry of Long Term Care. There's a support worker, which we'll call an analyst that we need because there's a lot of data collection that goes along with that. Which isn't filled yet and we're working on that. The, the road is supported by four commanders and then there's, currently we have sixty six, we're just in the process of getting to the seventy level. Those positions are posted and hopefully we'll be successful in finding candidates. Their community paramedic positions are supported by a different commander and they are, they're posted as well. So we should be able to fill all the positions and the growth in the industry as we, as we move forward from there. The other aspect that we look after is, this is part of China's survival is the public access defibrillation program, which is the defibrillators that you see in all the municipal buildings and arenas and so on. So China's survival, time is always of the essence and that's why ambulances and staffing levels are important. Ideally, in sudden cardiac arrest, a shock is delivered as quickly as possible. So we manage that program and there's hundreds of them all across the community. That's about, so we are having a little trouble with the pandemic. Particularly related to the purchase of goods, costs have gone through the roof. So you, you're seeing that in the bu- budget reflections. There, there, the, depending on which ministry it is, they're a little slow in announcing, but they have announced that there is one time support funding for these huge anomalies in, in funding. And they're starting to get their legs under them for things like masks where we could get N ninety five masks through the province if, if we really can't get anything through our, our local vendors. So that will be an anomaly that will ride its way through until COVID is over and and that's about what we have to talk about as far as head counts and staffing levels in the paramedic services.
Thank you, Chief Lister, Counselor Gardner.
Thank you, Chief Lister, through you, Madam Mayor. A number of years ago, the Council of the Day fought to get a program for paramedics at the St. Horns College. And I'm wondering at some point in time, if you feel that you might need to expand that program and work in conjunction with St. Horns College to expand that program so that we wouldn't be at a loss when we need paramedics down the road.
Chief Lister.
Thank you, and this question kind of ties to what Mr. Clark was talking about in the lean initiatives. So yes, that was an exciting time where we actively went out and helped the college develop a paramedic program. Over the next three years, there will be a shortage of paramedics. And so part of the lean initiative is, don't wait for them to graduate. This is one of the lean initiatives, it's, and very parochial, it's grow them as you need them. So this year, we actually hired on EMAs, that's, they're not graduated paramedics, they're first year students. And we're building them into the role, they have limited scope in, on the road. They can't work alone, they have to work with paramedic, but we're starting to grow them so that hopefully they, they realize how enjoyable it is to work in Cornwall and they stay. So yes, we are doing that. Colleges and universities dictate enrollment. That's actively recruited. There's a surplus, COVID had an effect on, on recruitment as well. And that part of the education of paramedics is the ability to learn on the job. And normally, there's about six hundred and thirty paramedics that go out onto the road and learn in the ambulances. Cornwall was one of the few that continued it even through COVID and the scarce resources. We recognized early that without graduates, we're going to be in some trouble in the future. So we, we ran it safely with, with scarce resources so that these paramedic students could get their COVID hours. We were the exception, so there's only about two hundred and fifty or maybe three hundred graduates this year, about half what we normally get. So there is competition for all graduates. So we're hoping that what we've extended to the college helps cement them into our service.
Just another issue that I want to bring up is, when we started that program at St. Horns College, we had students from all over Ontario, from Lindsay, from Pembroke, from coming to Cornwall, and that helps us in a way. And the second issue is, have you looked at the P two training, which is paramedic two? And we're doing paramedic one, but paramedic two allows the paramedic to do onsite medical attention that would be done in a hospital. So the P two program. What are we looking at doing that?
Chief Lister.
At the local college, there's no initiative that I'm aware of that is working on, they actually call it the ACP program now, the same thing, but just different name. There are close colleges to do that and we do actively promote that in our service. We hire on a ratio of one primary care, which is a P one, to one advanced care, which is the P two level, which was discussed. The, we do help them with their education, we do provide them a spot, much like the primary cares. They need to practice on the road under the guidance of a preceptor, we help them with the precepturing. And if they're local to our service, we try and help them in every way we can, ranging shifts and schedules and patterns to go around their schooling. It's a hot topic in bargaining on supporting the individuals. So we do have about twelve or fourteen in our service and we're actively recruiting for more.
And my last comment is, I would actively hope that we would try and get a P two program here in Cornwall, which would enhance our paramedics and would help the city to bring young people in here. They meet people, they get married, they stay here, so our population increases also. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Gardner, Counselor Burchard.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Lister, you, you addressed some of my questions already, which was, you know, the, there's a relatively high percentage change in your budget over the last year and certainly you've, you've addressed that. But you did bring up a point of the same, same type of question I asked Mr. Golden, and that is as our population increases in age, I have a feeling that this budget is going to continue to rise at a relatively higher percentage than others. How are we addressing that long term? Is there a formula that we can use? And maybe the question ultimately is for Ms. Bailey, is that factored into our long term financial plan? Or when we look at our known coming expenditures, are we addressing something like that when we do that?
Chief Lister.
So Ms. Bailey can jump in at any time. So we've adjusted our ten year capital plan to reflect the need for more ambulances as we move forward. This year was a bit of a, a quick pivot, we took on more ambulances under the long term care, which is finance, which is new money that we just basically amortized over a longer period of time to bring on an extra vehicle that we hadn't planned in our capital budgets. But we're working on that for the capital component of it. The year over year, human resources operational component is a little more difficult. There is no established paper document that says in five years, it will look like this and in ten years, it will look like that. So each year, we address it with councils, two councils, that's the county council and the city council. Trying to explain to and have the understanding that it is growing. We started with eight thousand hours this year, we'll probably need eight thousand more next year. We won't need vehicles every year, but we will have to start addressing a growing market.
Madam CFO.
Through you, Madam Mayor, Chief Lister provided all of the detail that, that we have for council. The Ministry of Health and Long Term Care does support the operations services at fifty, at fifty percent or very close to it. But that's a year behind, so once we have a planning year done, we, the municipality takes that year. And when we submit it to the province, we'll receive funding the year after to support that year's budget. And the municipal portion is shared between SDG and the city at a sixty forty percent ratio, close to that, based on weighted assessment. This particular year, the ministry was falling quite far behind on their fifty percent commitment or requirement. And in twenty twenty one, we did receive enough or not enough, but a substantial amount of money. And we've based the twenty twenty one budget on understanding that we'll continue to get at least that amount from the Ministry of Health.
Follow up.
Yeah, thank you, it actually leads to a question, you mentioned sixty forty, but and one of the other provincially funded elements was, I think, seventy thirty with the counties, is it, is there one formula? Or is it based on the provincial ministry's decision on, on how they do that?
There are many formulas across our shared services, for the most part, social and housing services is based on seventy thirty, it's a caseload, I believe that social housing is twenty two point eight five percent to seventy eight point something, but that's based on number of units. Glenstirdon Lodge is based on the residents, so they're closer to a seventy thirty as well, or a sixty seven percent for, for the city. And paramedic services based on weighted assessment, so depends on our agreements with SDG.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Grant. You're on mute. Thank you for letting me say that at least once during the meeting.
There was a lawnmower going on in my ear here, so that's why I shut off my mic.
It's all good.
I keep hearing the, that we're getting older and I'm just wondering, should we wait for the census report to come back to give us an idea on what our demographic population is? And so we don't overreact and then find that we've assumed all these extra costs unnecessarily.
I'm not sure who wants to answer that question. I have some comments, but I'm not sure who wants to answer, Madam CEO.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, so I would say, yes, it probably would be a good idea to wait for that census data information and also to understand the demographic of the group and the age of the group. I think that bringing on the additional resources that we did this year for paramedic services was absolutely the right move. And we might very well need to do it again next year and we likely, I think we're going to likely recommend that. But to do much beyond that or to take other initiatives on, I think you might want to wait and get more information before making those commitments.
Thank you, I, Madam CEO, I, I want to also say, I've never had an opportunity to use a the ambulance service till the last day of December where I had on collision with a big truck and man, are they professional, so kudos, I haven't had a chance to do it, but it's a really great service.
Thanks, yeah, thanks for saying that, Counselor Grant, I remember speaking to you that same day. And I'm glad you were okay, but you did say on that same day how impressed you were with, with paramedics. And they've been, they've been superstars during this, this pandemic, absolute drop the mic, superstars across the board. I think it's important, the, the census information, to Counselor Grant's point, is going to be extremely relevant. But Chief Lister and paramedic services and Mr. Golden and Glenstirdon Lodge have been telling us for years that we have an aging population, so this is not, I mean, the census is only going to confirm that, I think, what we already have seen coming. I'm interested in the census from a perspective of who, who's here, how many people are in Cornwall? And, and what's, what's happening, you know, right now, what's this snapshot going to tell us? But certainly from sitting on the Joint Liaison Committee, we've been talking about these aging demographics and this tsunami that's been coming, well, here it is. Okay, next presentation.
Good afternoon, Counsel and Madam Mayor.
Chief Weber, hello.
So to present the fire services, on page fifty four, you see our org chart. Although there are a few changes in that org chart, it's pretty much static to what, what is currently the way it is. And what I'm alluding to is the fact that a number of retirements that we are seeing in our service over the last year or so, as well as into the future for the next year or so. So the names that you see for platoon chiefs, one of them has changed and I suspect you will see all four of those will change over the next year. We're having a very graphic change in our environment as staff age and start to retire. And that leads on page fifty nine, I guess, or I'm sorry, my page numbers are covered fifty five, fifty six to the realization that our staffing costs are actually fairly zeroed this year, we have a point seven, point zero seven percent increase in our salaries and benefits year over year from twenty twenty to twenty twenty one. We're seeing a significant, first of all, we took into account our hiring of our deputy a little bit later this year as well as the drop in our salaries due to a number of our staff members that are leaving that have nine percent benefits on top of the first class. And we're hiring, of course, at probationary level, in fourth class, we currently have six staff at that level. We expect that we'll have three more in the next little while.
Sorry, Chief Weber.
Actually, I, I'll throw it out there, Chief, because it might help you.
Actually, I, I'll throw it out there, Chief, because it might help you. So realistically speaking, when we hire a new recruit, how long does it take him or her to get to the top of their pay scale?
Uh, it takes them to get to first-class firefighter status, four years. So they started probationary, fourth class, third class, second class, first class. So it's essentially five years till they reach their top rate.
Okay, so recognizing that, looking at this budget, realistically speaking, did you say six people have retired that we're replacing?
So I've, we have hired six new staff within the last year, actually since November last year, replacing staff that have retired from April the previous year. So we did a large gap of staff from the likes of Pete Perrell, Morris Lamer, and we replaced a person who is off on maternity right now. And we will create a hole for that person as they return. So those people come in at, at well below first class. There's also the service pay amount in fire of three, six, and nine that a long-term employee would be 9% above first-class rate. That they would no longer, that we would no longer be paying out to staff as they, as we replace them.
Now, I know there's at least two more members that I know personally who are either close or very close to calling it as well. We could talk about who they are, but that's not really relevant. So realistically speaking, we're looking at about eight people within the next year or two, the whole group. So technically speaking, in about four or five years' time, is it safe to say we're looking at significant jumps in salaries when those new recruits move like, and there isn't really maybe a new group of guys retiring? So do we, do we need to kind of anticipate? And I realize some of us, we may not be around, so it won't matter. But talking about council in general, do we need to anticipate in about four or five years? And incrementally, over the next four years, we're going to have to come up with some significant money. Is that safe to say?
Through you, Madam Mayor, that is correct. As, as these groups all, you know, reach new increments and increase in pay. And that includes right through to platoon chiefs who are not in the ninth percentage pay bracket yet. They will all, all of those groups will increase in pay. That's all taken into account in our calculations as we go forward though as well.
Great. Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Chief.
Counselor Gardner?
I just want to ask you one question, Jeff. Is there any, are there any female firefighters coming through? Are you looking at any female? It's been a good old boys' club for a long time. When are we going to see some females at the fire department?
Yeah, that's changing, Counselor Gardner. Chief Weber?
Through you, Madam Mayor. We now have four members that are female and we're waiting to hire our fifth.
Correct.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Hence, yeah.
Go ahead. Counselor Bergeron?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think we reviewed this a little bit at budget time, but can you speak to the mechanic, vacant mechanic role? Where transit services kind of plays a role? And with your new fire hall, if that will kind of reverse back to the way it was, just, just generally?
Through you, Madam Mayor, that is correct. So that was the other drop in the salaries line that we, that I did get to in my explanation. And that you will see reflected in changes in our services and rents, which has gone to paying for the mechanic to be working over in transit area. And that results in the reduction of that staff member for us. We don't anticipate, we anticipate that the efficiencies that we're seeing and the cost savings that we'll see will have that position stay in transit. It's, it's a, again, as a lean initiative, it was probably a little more efficient to have that, those vehicles repaired at the transit building where they've got the facilities to do that. Uh, and we don't, we are not planning, or we are not anticipating having that repair structure or that repair garage space added to our new fire station.
Thank you. I have to assume that's been working well then as a general plan.
Through you, Madam Mayor, absolutely. Our trucks, and again, not determining whether it's personalities or individuals, but certainly because of the care and maintenance that transit mechanics are laying their hands on, on our vehicles. Our fleet is in, certainly our usable fleet right now is in better shape, I believe, than it has ever been.
And last question is, you know, when you do long-term move into the new fire hall, is there, what, what's going to happen to the old fire hall? How do we, maybe that's not a, maybe that's not for you, maybe that's for the CAO. But is there a plan internally to use that facility somehow?
Chief Weber?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Again, I don't have the ability to comment particularly on that as we rent the space from facilities. So I'll turn it over to the CAO.
Madam CAO?
I threw, through you, Madam Mayor, with any, with any city building or facility, we would take it back to council. And if we have no further identified use for the building, we would ask council to declare it surplus, but we would come back with a report to council.
Thank you.
Chief Weber?
To continue on, one of the things I wanted to indicate as well is a drop in our fees, services, and charges. And unfortunately, our, some of our fees and those types of areas that we do realize year by year in an environment, it's a double-edged sword, if I may. We are seeing a reduction in fees because we are seeing a slow reduction in fires. Uh, so we're not getting a recovery from, we're not getting as big a recovery from fire mark. We're also, I mean, this is a good news story as well as it is a bad news story of our, our revenues are declining. But that means that our service fees are not being charged, which means we're not seeing the need to charge those fees in the public. So in, in the, in the reality of our inspection fees, we will probably see an increase to that over the next few years as we start to leverage those opportunities. However, a number of those things where we were charging in the past, we don't have an opportunity to charge them anymore. Car accidents are downs on the 401. We have not been able to do a recovery to the province for that, those types of things. And I guess for the rest of this, the increase that you see to our purchase of goods was to deal with a replacement of a radio repeater that is end-of-life. Uh, it is actually significantly beyond end-of-life. And that was managed through a transfer from the reserves into our, our transfer reserves back into our operating budget to manage that purchase. It has actually come in at lower value than we expected. So we will, it will cost as much. And that's pretty much it for our, the fire service.
Any further questions? Your comments about fires being down and car accidents being down, is that COVID-related or is that?
As part of a commentary, I would suspect that in 2020, our call volume was significantly down with people, and I don't know exactly the causes of that. Because that's not been the experience across the province. The provincial experience has been a greater number of house fires, a greater loss due to house fires. However, we have not seen that same issue. We've actually seen a reduction in our call volume as well as we're, we're not responding with paramedic services right now to the same number of calls as we used to. We've been reduced in our tiered response plan more to protect our staff as well as other response staff to ensure that there's safety. The paramedic chief and myself have a plan to return to that come June the first. If all things are copacetic and getting better, we have a plan to return to that. However, I don't suspect that our volumes will increase that dramatically. I would say through the, through last year, through the kind of April, May, and June timeframe, our call volume dropped, I would say almost 50%.
Thank you, Chief Weber.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you. Madam CAO, what's the next item? Is it, is it, because we have only 15 minutes left. Are we able to, to get through whatever the next item is?
I think we just need to see if we have staff on the call, Tracy, because we had planned two days and that was the end of what we had planned for, for today.
Well, that, that's fine. If we came to the end, that's fine. I was, I was going to want to end it by 6:15 anyway. So if you're saying we can break now, most of us will be attending pack at seven o'clock and Counselor McDonald has to chair that. So it's good to take a little break. Yes? All right. So tomorrow is three o'clock and we continue. Thank you for your participation today, all of you. Take care. Bye now. Oh, do we need a motion to adjourn, Madam Clerk? Sorry. Counsel, can you stay on, Madam Clerk?
Sorry, I forgot I was on mute. Yes, Madam Mayor, if we could get a motion to adjourn, that would be wonderful.
Counselor Abad, hit her hand up. Counselor Hollingsworth, all in favor? Carried. Thank you all.